Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Town Council. If you'll rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's not working.
Here you go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, announcements. Is this? This has to be real close, I guess. Thursday, October 25th will be a regular meeting of the Council here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And in November, instead of our usual second and fourth Thursdays of the month, we'll be meeting Thursday, November 1st and Thursday, November 15th, here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Eileen, do you have any announcements?
I do. Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? I wanted to remind people, this will be like my third time reminding you, but have to pardon me. EverSource is once again offering their free FreeOn Day at the transfer station. And that'll be this Saturday, October 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Residents can bring their FreeOn-based appliances to the transfer station and the normal fee for disposal will be covered by EverSource. FreeOn appliances include refrigerators, freezers, dehumidifiers, and room air conditioners. The Merrimack Biosolids Composting Team at the wastewater treatment facility has been selected as the recipient of the 2018 New England Water Environment Association, N-E-W-E-A, Biosolids Management Award, which recognized and honors individual groups, engineering firms, specific projects, municipalities, or a specific facility where municipal or industrial, for whether municipal or industrial, for their outstanding contributions and accomplishments in the field of biosolids technology and management within New England states and demonstrating a sustained commitment to biosolids utilization. So, it's a mouthful, but it's a very big deal and we congratulate everyone who participated in this. Yay!
There we go.
Also, Public Works Wastewater Division's Chief Operator Leo Gardett has been selected for the 2018 New Hampshire Operator Award from the New England Water Environment Association. This award is given annually to a person involved in the organizations of wastewater treatment facilities in each of the New England states to recognize an individual who has shown a high level of interest and performance in the wastewater operations and who has made significant contributions to the wastewater field. Leo has also received Employee of the Year recognition by the Public Works Department. So, very big congratulations to Leo. Is Leo here?
No.
Bummer, because he deserves it. He deserves kudos for that one. The Parks and Recreation Department advise you to join them tomorrow, Friday, October 12th, for an evening of comedy at the John O'Leary Community Center. The event will feature three well-known comics making for a fun night out. The event will also feature a silent auction of sports memorabilia, and the proceeds of the silent auction benefiting Natta Cook Day Camp Scholarship Funds. Tickets to the show are just $20 and may be purchased at the door. The door opens at 6:30 and the show begins at 7:30. For more information, call the Parks and Recreation Department at 882-1046. There are only two spaces left for the Merrimack Police Department's Firearms Safety Course on Saturday, October 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Contact Community Services Officer Bill Vanderside at 420-1842 for further details on the Police Department's Firearms Safety Training Course. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Next on the agenda is PFAS updates after last night. We might be all set, but I don't know if you have anything?
We're good to go, Mr. Chairman, but I do want to thank Assistant Commissioner Clark Farisey and Ben Chan, the epidemiologist, and Lisa Morrow, who's the Director of Public Health, along with everybody else from DES that showed up last night. Based on my guesstimate, I thought we had close to 200 people in attendance. And I really want to thank the community for coming out and participating and asking some thoughtful questions. And I certainly felt that it was a productive meeting and I'm hoping that we can have a similar thing in the spring of 2019 with, hopefully they'll have further updates at that particular time for the community. But I thought it was, it was well-attended, but I also felt it was very productive. And I don't know if my colleagues felt the same way, but that was, that was my impression. So, I do want to thank the community, those that came out. Do want to thank them and, and the members from DES and Department of Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda, oh, Peter, yes.
I mean, I was impressed by the amount of staff they brought out. And I'm just wondering if maybe we send a letter from the Council just thanking the group that came out.
That's great.
They did a great job, so that'd be nice.
Yep. We'll do that. Perfect. Thank you, Eileen. Thanks, Peter. Highway Garage update. Paul, did you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Highway Garage continues to progress. We are buttoning up the outside. The windows are going in. The doors will be going in. The exterior doors will be going in shortly. Next week, we're planning on doing insulation and sheet rock. So, the project's moving forward. We're still hoping for a Thanksgiving to be able to get into the Highway Garage by Thanksgiving.
Great. Thanks, Paul. Comments from the press and public? If you'd like to address the Council, you could feel free to step to this mic or grab a seat here. Yes. Senator Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've come tonight just to, uh...
You have to turn that on.
Thank you.
Why'd you show up?
To bring, bring a question from a Milford resident who came to Merrimack to a football game and was alarmed at the number of plastic bottles and cans that were thrown away and wondered if Merrimack had a recycling program.
Actually, we make it quite simple in town. It's a single stream and we'll have to have somebody make a quick call to the school district and ask them if they might think about looking into that. I appreciate that, though. Thank you. Yes, thank them for the heads up. Anybody further would like to address the Council? Seeing none, we'll move on. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements. And I've been looking forward to this first one here because I've been to a couple of his retirement forays where he emceed them. We're going to be recognizing Detective Scott Parks for 30 years of service to the town. And Chief, are you going to be?
Oh, yes, you must come on. I got to stand next to you. Sorry. You know, I will say this. When I started, I walked in and met this guy. I asked somebody, "Who's that? Who's that guy right there?" They're like, "Scott Park." And I was like, "Who the heck does he think he is?" And if you would have told me 27 years later that he would be one of my greatest friends, I would have said you were lying. But he is. We've come a long way. So, you know, what, part of what we do when, when we're recognizing somebody for, and this is not a retirement, so it won't be a roast. We're going to save that for your retirement. But when we're recognizing somebody who's been here 30 years, we kind of, first thing you do is go through their file. So, I went and took his file out and, well, his many, his large file, and started flipping through and I was like, "Well, there's just, there's no way that I could describe Scott Park from what I'm seeing in the file." So, that, "All right, well, you know what? I'll tell the story about that time." And I thought, "No, I can't tell that story." So, I'll tell the story about that. "No, I can't tell that story either." So, sorry. It's been great 30 years with Scott. So, but what I can tell you is that, on a serious note, you know, we, 30 years is a long time. It's a long time to do this job. And we ask a lot of our officers and our staff without question, you know, the things that they're exposed to. And Scott's been a criminal investigator for a very, 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 very long time. And one of the things that he's exposed to is the horrible, you know, things, gut-wrenching things that a normal person should not see and normally does not see. But every day, Scott comes to work and he smiles and he makes us laugh. And I think everyone who knows him knows that there's one thing you can count on with Scott. No matter how horrible a situation is and no matter how down you are, Scott will make you laugh. And that just makes the job that much better. You know, I can also tell you about all the different times, especially, you know, when he and I were in detectives together and we used to be called Cagney and Lacy. I won't tell you who's Cagney and who's Lacy. But, you know, he, he, we had a homicide suspect and the best state investigators went after this guy, after him, tried to get a confession, tried to get a confession. And nobody thought about lowly old Merrimack detectives going in. And we watched Scott go in there and talk to this homicide suspect and within, I'm going to say five, but it might have been 10. I might be giving you a little too much credit. 10 minutes, he had the guy crying, admitting to what he had done. And that's not the first time, you know, that that stuff happened. Nat Tarleton and I, single-handedly solved a, a bank robbery and the suspect would not confess. Scott was home sleeping all night while the rest of us were working and he came in fresh and smiley and got the guy to confess to the, uh, the, the bank robbery. So, but, you know, he, he, that's what he does. Scott is so good at what he does. He, he, there's never a question. And I know for me, when there's something that's very important, Scott's my guy that I go to and ask, you know, the lieutenant to have Scott do it because I just know that, not that we don't have other great investigators, we certainly do, but Scott has a special talent that we hope that he passes on to everybody else. I will say one other thing. I know I'm being very lengthy and I'm sorry, but 30 years is a long time. You know, a lot, he does all these things and he's exposed to all these things, but what they say about his character is, is amazing because I, there was a critical incident that some of our officers were involved in a few years ago. And I remember being there and I remember looking around and thinking, "Okay, first of all, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do." Second of all, I looked at Scott and he was able to show the compassion and the comfort to our officers. And I know that officer and their family will never forget what he did for them. And I certainly won't either. So, listen, 30 years, fantastic. It's amazing. Please keep coming to work. And I promise them that you would keep whatever you're about to say clean. So, because we all do remember that retirement party, too. So, but listen, congratulations.
(applause) The town's been thankful for your 30 years as well and this is what you get for 30 years. So, in appreciation of 30 years of service, Detective Scott C. Parks.
I thought it was going to be a rivets gift card. Nah, I'm not going to let you go. Thanks so much. Thank you very much. Just, obviously, my friends and my family are here. Not my family. My wife's at pottery class and my kids are sleeping. No, I'm just kidding. They couldn't make it because there's just, there's so much going on with the kids. But as I look around, I, I, I see Ted and I see Danny and I see Pete and all the guys and Mike and, and all the guys I work with today and have worked with over the years and they are truly family. Ted was one of my FTOs, taught me so much about things that I can't do on the job. His SOP manual was written on a bar napkin, so anything Ted taught me, I pretty much had to just keep away. So, there was many things that a lot of guys taught me. I've learned from some of the best. Ted Curtis as a detective, Jimmy Hughes, who retired several years ago. I've been very fortunate. I've had a long, great career. I remember when I first got here in the mid-'80s and I wondered just where my career would go. But I remember in 2000, when I got into detectives, I actually went home and told my then-girlfriend, now-wife, and I said, "You know what? I don't think I'm ever going to go back on the road. I don't think they'll let me back on the road. I think they'd rather just keep me in an office somewhere." But that's where you put most of the nuts. But it was funny, as I, as I was sitting there thinking about the 30 years, I thought about where I was 30 years ago and like, just the stuff I would watch on TV. I would watch cool shows, Magnum P.I., Baywatch for the plot, you know, nothing. But now I find myself watching Barney Miller, MASH, and all the commercials are about reverse mortgages, getting your own custom casket delivered to your house at a discount, walk-in bathtubs, Depends that don't show when they're full. And I, and I said to myself, "I don't know where 30 years have gone." And I, but I still, every day when I come in, I still look forward to seeing unfiltered stuff. I know I'm an HR nightmare, Sharon, I know that. And I'm probably one conversation away from a lawsuit, but I really enjoyed it. It's, it's been an awesome 30-something years and I, I, I don't know. I got enough energy to keep going. I've had some, some rough times in the last few months, but I will tell you, I have a very compassionate leadership that I work for. I'm very fortunate. I love all you guys. It's been an awesome ride and I will continue to come to work as long as I have vacation time. And, and, yeah. So, I can't say thanks enough. I guess I get a rocking chair when I do retire, so that's good. I'll hang out for that. But nah, it's been a, it's been a really, it's been a fun ride. It really has. Good stuff. Lot more to come. Sharon, don't worry about it. I'll keep it fairly clean. And thank you, guys, for everything. I really appreciate it. Thank you. (applause)
We're going to just take a couple of minutes till they do it. Get a few pictures up here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, I'd like to just, after, I had a chance to work with Scott for most of those years at the PD. And Scott is, as the chief said, he's the consummate, he's a consummate investigator. He's cleared more crimes than I can remember. He's done a great job. But probably one of the key moments that stands out in my career working with Scott would probably be, one day, I'm coming in as a captain, walking into the lobby of the police station, and there's Detective Park in his shirt and tie and coat and gym shorts and sneakers and being interviewed by Channel 9. And I looked at him, I, I, I just know Scott and I said, "I'm just going to keep walking." And I went in and, but what I later found out was Scott was taking his lunch break. He had hit the gym. Channel 9 came in, wanted to talk to him about a case, and he was kind enough to put on his shirt and tie and coat and do the interview. It was something to see, though, when you walk into that. So, he's done a great job and that's a great memory. I'll have Scott along with a lot of other great memories, so thanks for all your great work.
Absolutely. Next on the agenda, well, actually, Assistant Chief Bornhamon won't be here this evening, so if you were waiting for him, I apologize for not telling you sooner. And we'd be putting that off until another date. And so, item number three under recognitions, resignations, and retirements is the retirement of Ernie Doucette after his completion of 24 years of full-time service with the Town of Merrimack Public Works Department. And he retired on, he was retiring on October 12th. And so, Ernie.
So, I have only worked with Ernie for three short years out of his 24 years. So, when he came to tell me that he was retiring, I was sadly moved. He's someone that the town, his coworkers, and I really rely on. And this is where Denise stole my thunder. Ernie's personnel file is this thick. So, as I was going through it, I chose a couple of comments that kind of cover him and, and everything that he stands for. So, one of them was, "Ernie is a true jack-of-all-trades, from equipment operator to carpenter, from mason to pipe layer. He does it all and he does it very well. Mr. Doucette is always willing to do whatever task is assigned to him. During the winter months, Ernie is, always says yes when called upon. His dependability is a great asset to the town. Ernie consistently is one of the first to arrive to work each day, ready to go. Literally, the first one." And my favorite, "I only wish that I had a dozen more men like Ernie." Do you remember that one? And on and on it goes, comment after, compliment after compliment. I couldn't find a negative one. Ernie has been an inspiration and a role model to a lot of new employees. He's taken many under his wing and given them direction and encouragement. Ernie's replacement has some very large shoes to fill. We can only hope that they're as hardworking and career-minded as Ernie. So, on behalf of the town and for me personally, Ernie, I wish that you the best in retirement. We hope you have a long and peaceful coffee break, that you get to spend some time with your family and friends, and you really enjoy your time off. Thank you for your 24 years."
So, I've known Ernie for a few more years than Lori. When I came to town, I was the first operations manager in town. And, and I will say that honestly, Ernie was one of the most welcoming, kind people that I met at the garage. Bit of a mentor, took me in, accepted me, and helped me get going when I didn't know I knew how to get from Merrimack to the Turnpike. That's all I knew about Merrimack. He's been a great employee for the town, great friend. One of my most vivid memories of Ernie will always be seeing him out on the worksite. He's an equipment operator, too. And so, he's supposed to be running the equipment. And anyone who's been on a worksite with equipment operators, they're kind of divas. But Ernie, he was always the one in the hole, lugging the bricks, putting the mortar in. How many times did I say, "Ernie, get out of the hole and let the younger guys do it." Next day, there's Ernie back in the hole. Just can't help himself. That's who he is. He's a hard worker. Just found out this evening that he's picking up his clothes for his new job tomorrow. He's not even taking a day off. But that's who he is. He's a kind, gentle man, loves his friends, loves his family, and you'll be missed. Thank you.
So, of course, you get a plaque for this. All these years, it's, it reads, "Presented to Ernie Ernest T. Doucette upon the occasion of your retirement from the Town of Merrimack Public Works Department in recognition of your, the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for 24 years. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the Town of Merrimack. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, October 10th, 1994 to October 12th, 2018, presented by the Merrimack Town Council and the Town Manager." Thanks, Ernie.
I'm going to Disney World. Thank you.
I was, I was looking to see if there was something else because I thought they were staying. I'm going, "Why are they staying?" And next on the agenda is the annual review of the Town Center Committee. Per Town Merrimack Charter, Article 6, Section 6, at least annually, there should be a review with the Town Center Committee. The agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the Council should act or know about. Nelson?
Thank you, Chairman Rothaus and members of the Town Council, for this opportunity to give you my annual results from the Merrimack Town Center Committee. With me tonight is Bill Wilks. He's been a loyal member of the committee for several years and he was in the room for another purpose, but he, he's going to sit in with me and give me some moral courage here. The Town Center Committee is a result of a study called the ITRAC Study, which was done by the National Regional Planning Commission at the behest of the Town Council in 2007. And its purpose was to identify areas in the town center of the town, what we call the town center, for improvement and making it more of a town center. And the work of that committee focused on sidewalks and making it more pedestrian-friendly. So, that was the, the outcome of that was a study called the ITRAC Study. And it recommended the formation of a committee to continue the work that they had started. In implementing, the work of the committee was to implement the recommendations that they had made. The committee itself reports to the Town Manager directly. It works with town officials, residents, businesses, the Conservation Commission, the Watson Park Committee, and the EDCAC Committee. Those were all, all of these have representation on the committee. We'll talk about that in a minute. But the purpose was to coordinate the development of a safe and environment and, a safe and inviting town center for residents and visitors to patronize local businesses in key destinations. For the purpose of this study, what was defined as the town center is the area in town that's east of the Effie Everett Turnpike, north of the Rite Aid Crossing, and south of Front Street. So, that would give you a block of area which is the, sort of the geographic, well, north-south geographic center. It's not truly geographically centered, but that's where the center of business, where the town hall, the library, and police station and so on are located. The current membership of this committee consists of myself, who is chairman, Peter Flood, who is a vice chairman, Jackie Flood, serves as our secretary, Bill Wilks, Karen Freed, Matt Chevanel, and Bill Cummings. And Finley is our Town Council representative on the committee. The, we currently have no representative from the Merrimack Chamber of Commerce. We've been trying to get them interested in it, but the Chamber of Commerce has not been able to identify a person who's willing to serve on our committee yet. But we're still working on that. Our big projects, our biggest project going right now is the Sauhegan River Trail. The Sauhegan River Trail will ultimately connect the Watson Park to Wildcat Falls. And the trail along the Sauhegan River, it passes under the Effie Everett Turnpike through an old sluiceway that was built for the mill that stood on the east side of the, Route 3 at one time. During the course of the work in the past year, they, they discovered that there were some structural deficiencies in the bridge, the Chamberlain Bridge. And this is going to add substantially to the cost of this project. of this project. At the suggestion of the Department of Transportation, who is overseeing this project, it was suggested that we take money from another grant that we had received to build a sidewalk on Woodbury Street and north of the library, and use that money together with the money we already had to continue the Sauhegan River Trail and to apply for another grant to do the Woodbury Street. So, we've now, we're now working with revising the cost estimates and the budgets, and the New Hampshire DOT has approved this approach, but we haven't been able to make a lot of progress yet. But we supposedly have the money, and it is going to go forward. The TAP, TAP, by the way, stands for Transportation Program, Transportation, Alternative Program, thank you. That grant for Woodbury Street, good, he comes to the meeting, see? The, that grant was granted in 2016, and that money has been canceled. That money is being used, the project has been canceled, the money's being used for the Sauhegan River Trail. And we have since applied for another TAP grant to cover Woodbury Street and the north side of Babousak Lake Road going from the library to the overpass on the Effie Everett Turnpike. This is now in review. It is a competitive selection. Once again, there are four competitors for this money. It is being reviewed by the, what they call the TTAC, which is the Transportation Advisory Group of the Nashua Regional Planning Commission, and they will make a recommendation. Last time, we were recommended for that project, and we're hoping for the same kind of a recommendation this time. During the past year, we were fortunate to complete one little piece of the project, which was of the total recommendations of the ITRAC, which was to build a sidewalk or passageway from Route 3 to the Abbey Griffin Bandstand and Abbey Griffin Park. This was undertaken by the Rotary Club. I should point out that Bill is also a member of the Rotary Club, and the Rotary Club stepped up and agreed to do this. They provided the design and the materials and the labor to build that walkway that you see out there now. We had a ribbon cutting on September 20 of this year, attended by members of the Town Council, the Town Center Committee, the NRPC, and Director of Public Works, Kyle Fox was present as well. And there was video taken of that. We were hoping to use that to inform more people in the town about the project, and that video is currently being edited and spliced together by Justin Slaz, who works here at the Town Community Communications Group. For public outreach, which is one of our projects, we coordinated with the Planning Board in working a public attitudes survey in April of this past year. The, this project was really the Planning Board's project, but it affects us because this project is looking at the entire length of Route 3 to make a master plan for pedestrians and bicycles along Route 3 from Bedford to Nashua. And we are working with Regional Planning once again on that, and they are in the process of putting this plan together. The, as part of that, we did a public attitudes survey in, at the April 20 election, and at that time, we got a lot of very positive feedback from the people who took part in the survey. It seems like it's something people are very interested, once you stop and ask them about it. There's been mostly positive, very positive feedback. We also put on information booths about our work at the Winter Carnival last year and the July 4 Pancake Breakfast. Once again, the work of the Rotary, and we're still getting positive feedback at those events as well. The Safe Routes to School Project is one of our outreach programs. The Capital Improvement Program proposed by the school district now includes a sidewalk along O'Gara Drive, finishing the sidewalk on O'Gara Drive. If you're aware, the sidewalk comes out from the high school, and it sort of stops short of reaching Route 3. And this is now in the CIP for 2020 and '21, in the school district's CIP. Yesterday, if you noticed, was October 10, and happens to be International Walk to School Day. And there was articles in The Telegraph this morning about it, pictures of our police department, and a large number of kids who walked a mile in the vicinity of the school. As a symbolic, it's a symbolic walk to school, but someday, they're hoping to be able to walk from, maybe from east of the, west of the Turnpike to the, to the school. So, that's pretty much what our accomplishments have been for this past year. For 2019, we expect to continue to execute the TAP grants. There will be public hearings on those when the, once we get a little, hopefully, we'll get an approval from the, and an award for the next phase and for the continuing of the phase that we're in on the Sauhegan River Trail. We're going to continue our public outreach. We're still trying to get the Chamber of Commerce back in the boat and continue with the information booths that we have been sponsoring at various public events. We work to bring complete streets awareness to the town and people, coordinate efforts with NRPC on the Route 3, the Route 3 Bike Pedestrian Plan that's being put together for the Planning Board. We're working with them to coordinate with the activities that we have. And we're coordinating with DPW in preparing capital improvement plans for the pedestrian ways in the town. And we're hoping to get more of the, more on TV, on the public TV, on the Merrimack TV, about the activities and about what we have done in the past year. Our recommendations or requests for the council is to continue to support us through the capital improvement, building capital reserves through the Capital Improvement Program. Last year, it was started. We've got one project in there now. We'll hope to add another project this year. And these are in our ears, but they're building segments of these sidewalks in the town center plan. And you can help us recruit a full committee. There's openings on the committee for members of the public at large, anybody who expresses an interest in sidewalks, we invite them to join us, and we extend that invitation to all of you and all of your friends. For, there's a, I did have a handout, which is mostly what I've talked about. If you did not get one, I have some extras. And other than that, I'll just point out that in that handout, there's places you can go and research more, various websites on the process of building sidewalks and what it involves and the benefits that accrue in terms of health, safety, and goodwill in the community. So, with that, I will open for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Nelson. Tom?
Just, thank you, Nelson. Good presentation. When does the committee meet, so for people who might want to join?
Well, yeah, that's perhaps been an issue for some of our things, but I'm glad you asked the question, Tom, because we meet, right now, we're meeting at noon, on a Friday noon, usually once a month in this room. If there was interest in having another night, another time, we, that's, we're flexible on that, but that's the way most, most of the people have been able to make that. They're either in business here in town, like Bill, and they can come over during their lunch hour, spend it with us.
And that's a good point. It works for the current committee, but if it had to change to have more people on board, it would.
Yeah. Anybody who works in town can probably make it.
I brought, one time, one of my little grandsons, and I had him stuffed under the table, and that worked for about half the meeting. I don't even know if you recall, it was a few years ago.
We miss him. We miss him, Finley.
So, does anybody else have anything further for Nelson or Bill? Nope, see none. Thank you, Nelson. And if you want to wait right there, we'll be quick.
Okay.
Nelson, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nelson.
The next item is, no public hearings, updates from our legislative delegation, if there's anybody that would like to speak to that. All right. Town Manager Report? Nothing?
I have nothing.
Thank you, Eileen. I appreciate no consent agenda. Under Old Business, item number one, the Rotary Club of Merrimack has requested the use of Watson Park for their annual sale of Christmas trees. And here this evening is Bill Wilks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. Hopefully, this won't be as painful as the Comcast testimony, but...
Oh, that's right. That's why, oh, we have to take this off the table if somebody would...
Motion to take the 2018 Rotary Club Christmas tree sale off the table.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. 6-0-0. And I also forgot to mention, Tom Koenig has been excused from this evening's meeting. So, sorry about that. Thank you.
So, anyways, I think most of you know that for the last 25-plus years, we've held the sale at the old slash new Shaw's Plaza, which I went by there tonight, and it looks really nice. And they're actually cooperating with us to let us do it there again. But there are some issues that we're dealing with. They're building the Hayward's, where the Hayward's Restaurant or drive-through or whatever that's considered is exactly where we used to sell trees. And we had a power line coming in that essentially, we strung across the road there, and it worked out well. They're cooperating, like I said, but it's not clear as to where we would be on that site. And then we have to deal with issues like power and some other more minor issues. So, I'm really here tonight on a contingency basis to ask the council for permission to do it at Watson Park again. We did it there last year when they were under construction. It worked out really well. I think we've been good citizens in keeping the place clean, making sure it's clean when we leave. So, I think I could report back in the next few weeks and tell you what our decision is. We are still working with, with the owner of the mall, but I wanted to get ahead of this thing because we didn't want to end up having 300 and some odd trees with nowhere to go with them. So, I am respectfully requesting permission to sell them at Watson Park.
Thank you.
As a possibility.
So, how did that work out last year with, because I see Buckley's employees seem to park over there. How did you deal with that last year?
We asked them not to park there.
Okay. And that was not, well, I mean, I agree with you.
I mean, they do, they do park over there, and I don't know if they have permission to park there. We didn't make a big deal out of it. Obviously, they have a pretty good business, and they have a parking issue. And, you know, it's beyond anything we were...
But you didn't have any problems or anything with it? I mean, because if there is, then we could...
We just kindly asked them, you know, while we're having our sale, if you could park somewhere else. And they, I think they pretty much accommodated us.
Now, is that something we can address as a town of Buckley's during that time? So, they don't park down there? So, while he's, while the Rotary's doing their trees?
Sure.
So, it doesn't put him in any, any kind of predicament, saying, "No, you can't park here"?
I don't think he's been in a predicament. So, I would prefer not to go and speak to them unless it becomes a problem.
All right. I just don't think he needs to speak to them. That's all.
Whatever you say.
Just a town issue.
All right.
I don't know what the final of that little conversation was, but I'd like to wait off, hold off on the conversation as well, if it's not necessary.
Yeah, I don't think we should open up a can of worms either. But, I mean, if, I don't think Bill needs to be put in any kind of position either.
If it becomes an issue...
No, it hasn't. Okay. Yeah, as long as it's not a problem, I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, it worked really well down there. And I, we, you know, we added electricity. We got permission from Matt, and we added electric, we had our own electrician add electricity. So, there's electricity close to where we sold trees last year. So, that hurdle is in good shape. So, anyways.
Very good. Peter, I think, was next?
Actually, Bill, you may be not be able to answer this, but I know Kyle, is the skate rink going to be active at that time, the ice skating?
Yeah, but just for the sake of this conversation now, is it?
Okay.
Okay, all right. And we'll touch on that later, but thank you.
But as a part of that, we're very respectful of the parking situation. We keep the trees off the parking lot. We do have the trailer there, but, you know, we don't, we don't take all the parking spots and so forth. And, I mean, there's quite a few people that come down there, as you probably know, with their dogs. And they were, you know, in and out, and it was all fine. No problem with it whatsoever.
Bill, I don't doubt that you guys would be great partners over there neighbors. And frankly, I, when I think about that park like we had last year, you guys selling Christmas trees and the skate, skating rink open makes for a nice atmosphere, I think.
Right.
I'm sure you guys will run a great, great tree sale over there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Bill?
Mr. Chairman, question for you, the Paul or Eileen, are they going to be putting the fence in around that particular time, or do we expect the fence to be...
The fence will be in within a week or two. That's all part of, we're going to update you when we talk about Watson Park.
Okay, so, no conflict?
No conflict.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? It was a pleasure with the council. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Town Council authorized the Rotary Club of Merrimack to use Watson Park for their annual sale of Christmas trees without reservation.
motion by Councilboy, seconded by Barbara. Bill, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, it's self-explanatory.
Any further discussion?
For me, I just want it to be known, this is something we would address if anybody brought it forward. But in my world, what the Rotary does, has done, and continues to do for the community is, is pretty amazing. So, it's an easy vote for me. But, Bill?
And I would just point out, this is contingency that, that they're still looking to work. So, I think it's a win-win situation for them. And it's, quite honestly, I think it reflects tremendous planning on the Rotary's part to, if Plan A fails, they've got a Plan B in place. So, I appreciate that.
Very good. All right, see no further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. 6-0-0. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
And what I'd like to do, if, without objection, I'd like to move number three, under Old Business, to switch two and three. In numbers, if that's okay with everybody, the item number three is the council discussing potential options for the removal of the toll plazas in Merrimack. And the reason I'd like to move forward is because we have Counselor Dave Wheeler and Senator Gary Daniels here, who might be able to answer questions and so on. I actually had a discussion with them during the widening project public hearing this past week, and had heard, and Bill had brought to us a couple weeks before that about the potential of, of the taking over segments of Continental Boulevard from the state if they were able to get rid of tolls. And so, I thought we should have that discussion because they're moving forward at a rapid pace in their, in their press, in their discussions.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm actually going to object because I think Senator Daniels and Counselor Wheeler are going to be in a very unique position to help us discuss not only item two, item three, but also item four. Because I know that they have also been very actively involved with the 101A widening project as well. So, I think if we're going to have this type of...
We'll keep it in order.
Just keep it in order, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We'll do that. Very good.
Thank you.
Then we'll stick to the original plan. And the council is to be presented with an update based on the New Hampshire Department of Transportation's public hearing that was held on October 3, 2008, well, this past week. And here this evening is Kyle Fox, our Director of Public Works. Um, and here this evening is Kyle Fox, our, our Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Town Council. Um, as you mentioned, um, last Wednesday, October third, uh, members of the special committee, um, appointed by the Governor Executive Council, held a public hearing to determine the necessity of the occasion of the layout of the proposed Effie Everett Turnpike Widening Project. The project proposes to construct a third travel lane on the Effie Everett Turnpike, um, northbound and southbound, three sections, uh, from Nashua to Bedford. There'll be a map coming up soon. There it is. This shows the three sections. The first section starts in the city of Nashua, crosses into Merrimack on the south end, um, just south of exit ten. The middle section goes from basically the elect, exit, just north of exit eleven area to, um, the northern part of town. Uh, and then the third stretch is in Bedford, um, as it connects to the work that was done on the Airport Access Road. Executive Counselor David Wheeler is the Chair of the Special Committee and Executive Counselors, Christopher Pappas and Joseph Kenny are also members and all attended the public hearing. Following the hearing, the, uh, committee will evaluate all matters brought to their attention at the public hearing in the following ten days from then, which, uh, takes us to tomorrow. Members of the DOT presented various aspects of the project, um, including Wendy Johnson, who was the project manager, Rob Faulkner, who was the project manager from CHA, which is Clough Harbor Associates. They're a consulting firm. Chuck Schmidt, who's the administrator of the Bureau of Right-Away. Um, and John Evans, who's the Chief of the Air and Noise Pollution Division. The team presented the history of the turnpike project there and, um, talked about the proposed project, um, including the widening of the three sections, reconstruction of five bridges, uh, two of which, uh, carry town, um, town of Merrimack streets, uh, right-of-way impacts, um, and sound impacts and of course, environmental impacts. Uh, following the presentation, Councilor, Executive Councilor Wheeler opened the Florida comments from the public. A brief summary of the comments, um, focused on a few different areas. Um, first, um, I know I was pleased and I think DOT was as well, that all the speakers that got up there spoke positively about the need for the project, uh, specifically the widening to the three lanes. Anyone who, who sees it in the morning or the afternoon knows that the project is very much needed. Multiple speakers addressed the lack of proposed sidewalk on Wire Road. Uh, but they did commend the department on the, on their proposal to put two sidewalks on the Babusick Lake Road Bridge. Uh, there were also speakers that, um, expressed concern over the lack of proposed sound walls in the ministerial drive Vista Way neighborhood. Um, and the, on the mobile hu, home park on Camp Sergeant Road by exit eleven and by East Ridge condominiums. And there was also a brief comment on the, um, current traffic congestion on the north part of Route Three, particularly southbound, north of Bedford Road, and the possibility of adding the, uh, completing the interchange at exit twelve to help alleviate, help alleviate that congestion. Regarding the, the Wire Road Bridge comment, I spoke with, uh, project manager Johnson after the meeting. And we had a good discussion about it and she asked me to send a proposal, um, which, following the, uh, the advice I get from the council tonight, I will send an email tomorrow, um, so that it could be, can be part of the public record. Um, also, I know the Town Center Committee, uh, drafted a letter of support for sidewalks on Wire Road as well. Uh, so that will also be forwarded to the DOT for their consideration. Um, and then finally, as, as the project moves forward, uh, we've, we as a town have worked closely with DOT throughout the, the history of the project so far and will continue to do so. Uh, we have a meeting, uh, scheduled for next week. It's not finalized yet, but to, uh, with our, with Public Works and our emergency personnel to talk about crossovers, uh, for emergency vehicles on the turnpike as they do this project as well. And we'll continue the, the conversations about all aspects of the project. And I encourage, uh, many counselors or Eileen or Paul or the public, if anyone has any questions or comments they want posed to the DOT, they can certainly use, uh, Public Works to, to be that conduit. So. So what the, uh, the picture I'm bringing up now was the, um, was the record plan that, that Wendy showed at the meeting Wednesday night. And what this shows is the Everett Turnpike Bridge as it goes under the, um, Babusick Lake Road. The Everett Turnpike as it goes under the Babusick Lake Road Bridge. The turnpike goes from the bottom of the page to the top of the page north to the south. And Babusick Lake Road runs, uh, from left to right, um, heading in an eastward direction. The, it's really hard to see, but, um, so this is the bridge. The, the item on the bottom of the page is what's called a road profile. And that shows the grade of the road as you run along Babusick Lake Road. So it, the road has always had the natural, um, crest as you get to the bridge and then goes back down. To accommodate the added length of the bridge, um, due to the geometry required to build the project, the, the bridge is actually going to be about six feet higher than it is today. Obviously, those impacts will carry out, um, to the, to the approaches. On this bridge, as I mentioned before, they are proposing sidewalks on, on, um, both the north and side of Babusick Lake Road. Uh, Wire, Wire Road, uh, I'm not going to bring it up because it looks, for, for everybody looking at it on this small screen, it looks identical to this, um, only there's, there's no sidewalks. And I can show you in a closer view what the typical section of each will look like. If I can get this to work. Alright, so up, up here is the existing Wire Road. You can notice how, um, tight the cars are to the guardrail. Uh, there's really not, not a very good space for walkers currently, um, as you cross that bridge. It's, uh, pretty hairy. The proposal that DOT had come to a, come to the hearing with was to do eleven-foot travel lanes for the vehicles and then have a six-foot shoulder. So there would be, um, a five-foot shoulder, I'm sorry. Uh, so there'd be much improved with even just doing what DOT had proposed. Obviously, adding a sidewalk on top of that would be even better. So I, whether, whether we recommend, uh, sidewalk on one side or as the Town Center Committee recommended, two sides, um, that can be a point of discussion tonight. Then on Babusick Lake Road at the bottom of the page, shall scroll up here so everyone can see, uh, shows the existing section on Babusick Lake Road. Currently, there's an existing sidewalk, um, that pedestrians can use. Um, on the other side, it's, if you walked on that side, it is fairly hairy there too. Uh, but the proposal by DOT is to put sidewalks on both sides. So it'll be a nice accommodating section. And it'll tie into the plans that, that Nelson just spoke about in the Town Center Committee, which is connecting from Danny Webster Highway to the schools to eventually have sidewalks on both sides of the road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kyle, I just, a couple, a couple of points. I was actually, wasn't at the second meeting, I was at, at the first meeting. There needs to be a commitment to sound barriers along the, the, well, let me back step. I support the widening of the project. And I think people, you and I have talked, that I, I think it should be four lanes and I lost that argument and that's fine. So, that being, that being said, there needs to be a commitment to sound barriers along that, along that stretch of road. There needs to be a commitment to some type of graffiti management plan. If we're going to use sound barriers or come up with something like that, I certainly, we've worked hard to create a very presentable community for people traveling both northbound, southbound with the commitment that we've made to economic development here in Merrimack. It's really important that we're maintaining of, of, and presenting Merrimack positively with people that are traveling to and from, um, their place of residence or wherever they're staying. So that's, that to me is, is, is critical. The, the other thing that needs to be done, and I mentioned it to, to Chairman Rothausen, and I brought it up back in the first meeting and I'll, and I'll bring it again. You know, when you're doing, when DOT is doing their noise monitoring, they cannot be doing it between the hours of eight AM and ten AM and between three and five. Because it's bumper-to-bumper traffic. You are not going to get the appropriate decibel monitoring that you need that's going to adequately represent what the neighbors are going to be impacted by the increased traffic that potentially could occur by going from two lanes to three lanes. So that really needs to be addressed. The, the one thing that I had considered, and I don't know if, if it requires, uh, legislature or what have you, but, but can we prohibit trucks from using their air brakes within the, within the town limits of Merrimack along that stretch of road? And I think that would go a long way, you know, living two miles away, uh, on Joppa Road. Given this, so I, given the, the atmospheric conditions in the community at that time, I can hear, I can hear the air brakes two miles away. I can hear the traffic from the turnpike coming and going. I don't, when, when the atmosphere is perfect, I can hear everything. And then the last, the last thing, and I don't know if this has been brought up, but are they going to, is, the DOT needs, needs to commit that they're going to have some type of fencing along those bridges, Babusick Lake Road, Wire Road, Bedford Road. I, you know, we just had last, at our last meeting, a proclamation regarding mental health. And the last thing we, I, like, we should be doing everything that we can to making sure that when people are crossing the bridge, they're crossing the bridge. They're not looking to jump down onto the turnpike because of, because of specific issues. So there needs to be some type of fencing put in place there as it relates to, to the, the, the bridge reconstructions that they're doing at Babusick Lake Wire and, and Bedford Road. And I, and I, and the, and I, and I hope the DOT hears this. And, and I know Council Wheeler is here and Senator Daniels here, because, you know, Chairman Disco and I can go back regarding that traffic like on Executive Drive, how many years that we begged them to, to, to synchronize that, that, that fell on deputies for a long time. So I'm really hopeful and optimistic that, you know, the, a lot of the, the feedback that we are giving them regarding this project, which I think all of us, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we all conceptually do support. I do hope that they listen, listen to what we're saying because while we support the project, we need to mitigate the level of impacts that could potentially, um, impose themselves on, on not just our businesses that, above the roadway, but also, also our neighborhoods. So.
I will certainly pass those comments along. With respect to the, uh, the fourth item, the fencing on the bridges, there will without a doubt be fencing.
Okay, thank you.
That's a standard, uh, feature on all DOT bridges over main roads.
Wire Road doesn't, you, Paul, Wire Road doesn't have it, right?
Not currently, but it will.
It will. Okay, that's, I mean, I wrote, okay, perfect. Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Here.
I'm just trying to follow up with Bill. I support the wire road.
Peter? Peter?
And, uh, thank you. And, uh, I was going to mention the safety fencing on Wire Road because over the years, uh, I've had the experience to see that there's been various issues of, uh, suicidal people, criminal mischief, people just falling over that fence and, and so forth. So I'm glad to hear that fencing's going in. I know we're up against a ten-day time limit to get, um, a request into the, um, council on, um, this. But Bill touched upon it, the sound and sight barriers. And I specifically would like the council to submit a letter on this project specifically targeting the following neighborhoods. Uh, the Back River Road near the turnpike, Vista Way, Round Tree Lane, Sunnydale Drive, Clay Street, Webster Green Condominiums, Maple Ridge Condominiums, East Ridge Condominiums, because these are, are butt up against this. And unfortunately, when we expand this road, it's going to take down a lot of the trees and so forth. So I think I'd like to spell out those specific neighborhoods, um, uh, in, in a letter to be addressed to. At least let's get some good research and if we, and if it needs a sound and sight barrier, let's do it. If it doesn't, then give me a good reason why, that's all. Um, so, uh, that being said, that's really an issue and I'm hoping we can get that letter sent out because we're right up against it tomorrow. So.
Does it require a motion?
Let's, let's put all on the table.
Okay, fair enough. I'm just asking a question. No, very good. Um, Barbara?
I just had a question for Pete. Those sites are on top of what's already listed into Kyle's? Because Kyle has three sites mentioned for sound barriers too.
Yeah, he mentioned Round Tree.
You just want to add those streets?
Yeah, I want to add those, uh, because, I mean, you, I, you know, I know some folks from those neighborhoods didn't speak up. Maybe they didn't feel, but I think we need to, we'd be remiss if we didn't. Because I mean, Clay Street, that's right there. If you, you know Clay Street, it's right on top of the highway. So, so things like that. But thank you.
Can I just get a list of those? Can, can you send me an email with a list of those if that's what your intention is? Uh, just, just one other thing, if you don't mind. So as far as the sidewalks are concerned, um, we, um, adding the sidewalks, you talked about the change in the height when you do, um, changes to the, the length and the width. Would adding the sidewalks be a large, um, request? Would it be a, uh, uh, significant request to have them add, add the sidewalks on both sides of the street? Would it change the dynamics of the?
Not significantly, no. If we were proposing just to do sidewalks through a tap grant or something, that would be a big, big deal in the scope of a project this large. I forget the cost that Wendy read off, but it was a hundred million plus for the project. The sidewalk on Wire Road would be pretty minor in comparison.
Alright. I just wanted to see if it was, because I think the council probably wants to either add or maybe even prioritize the things that they are, are going to send a letter about.
In speaking with DOT folks after the meeting, I get the sense that they're very receptive to the Wire Road sidewalk.
Okay.
It's just a matter of formalizing it.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, Barbara.
No problem. Getting back to the sound barriers, um, from Bedford Road north on both sides. Because it has to be both sides, east and west of, from exit twelve north. Because on, uh, Back River Road, it's budding, right, as you get into, you know, the actual overpass for Bedford Road. And as you go north, I'm sure many of you have noticed that the houses are right there. You know, that big red barn that sits there, the house is all the way up, uh, almost until you get to the exit for, um, the airport. So we need to stress that as well. Now, you did mention, Kyle, that there was something that they were planning maybe for exit twelve for traffic congestion? What exactly is that? Because I hadn't heard that before.
So, um, so stepping back a bit from Wednesday night's meeting, uh, last Wednesday day, uh, the town held, uh, Highway Safety Committee meeting. And at the, at the meeting, Representative LaRue, uh, mentioned that he had heard from some folks who live on Hilton Drive, which for those who don't know, Hilton Drive is just north of Bedford Road on Danny Webster Highway on the east side. And, um, ever since the Airport Access Road opened, which is exit thirteen, uh, the traffic on particularly southbound in the afternoon on that stretch of Danny Webster Highway is, has increased dramatically, uh, making it to the point where it's difficult for folks on Hilton Drive to get a left if they're trying to head south on Danny Webster. So, so that, that came up at the Highway Safety Committee meeting. We've talked internally about that problem, um, over the last couple of years. And one thing we. And one thing we, there, being a state section road, there's not a lot we can do. We do happen to open, we do happen to own as a town the Bedford Road signal. That's where our portion of Danny Webster stops, at the north side of that signal. We did hire a consultant and NRPC to, to get updated traffic counts last year, and we optimized the signal to try and mitigate that problem as much as we could. But anyone who drives a quarter knows it, it didn't solve the issue. So, really looking big picture, there's a couple of solutions. And, and this is how projects start and how they get into the tenure plan and eventually get built. It starts with identifying a problem. Some of the conceptual fixes or aids to the issue are, one would be adding capacity onto Danny Webster Highway, meaning you add extra lanes to help out. The other thing that may help is finishing the exit 12 interchange, because really, it's the folks trying to get the north side of Bedford, of Merrimack, they used to have to go down to exit 11, now they can get off at exit 13. If they could get off at exit 12, a lot of that problem would, would go away. DOT did address that at the hearing last Wednesday evening, saying they did look at that as part of the conceptual part of the project. Unfortunately, in order to construct that, it would require taking of houses on Back River Road. And they decided that, at that time, it wasn't something they were going to pursue because of that. So, if that is a desire, obviously, that's something that we need to get to DOT from either the council or citizens, and see if that's something that, that folks are willing to accept. At this point, DOT doesn't plan on finishing the interchange.
Okay, yeah, and, and just, that was the road I was concerned about, Hilton Road there, with the flatley building going on.
That's.
And the increased traffic in that area as well, so.
Yeah.
This is slightly off topic, but I've, I've been curious for quite some time as to why the traffic studies show that all these 250 apartments, et cetera, et cetera, are not going to cause any more traffic problems when the problem, problems are already impossible. I, I don't understand how that all came out that way. Are they, do they review them? Do they, or is that a question?
They certainly are reviewed. I'm not a traffic engineer.
Okay.
I, I have a hard time understanding it as well, because, you know, there's already a problem. And I guess the only explanation I can give is that there's already a problem, and by adding the, the traffic from a new development, wherever it is, isn't causing the problem. So, it's hard to hold one accountable for the issue that's been there for some time.
I don't like the sounds of that.
Well, I think, I think, I think, not to go off into this area, but I really believe that the impact is evening hours in particular, and that that left turn lane, if I'm understanding it, Tom would know better than all of us, I suspect, but there's a left turn lane that will, that will get them off the road. So, there's, it's really not adding to the delay. It might back up a little, but the traffic is all still flowing, because that development is, you know, has a dedicated lane to get out of there. So, but, but anyhow, that's not really for tonight, I suppose, unless you can work some magic with DOT in this big project, but.
I don't think I have that much influence.
No. I just, I'd like to know for the, for the minutes that Tom came in about 8:10, Tom Cane.
I guess just following up one more piece on that for Barbara. The next morning, Thursday morning, I got a call from two different higher-up people at DOT, because I guess there was discussion with Representative LaRue after the public hearing. And I think he's trying to organize a meeting on November 14th. I don't think that's settled yet, but he's trying to organize a meeting, and it's going to be a subcommittee of the Highway Safety Committee, as I understand it. I also spoke with a resident who lives in Webster Green, and her folks live in Hilton Drive, and I suggested to her that she contact Representative LaRue and be a voice on the committee as well.
Hi, Peter.
Kyle, just the, the exit 12 situation. I know that there was in discussion, they'd have to look at purchasing homes and property right around there, but I, and maybe this is for future discussion when you talk with the state engineers or so forth, but why not run the southbound off-ramp off of, onto Back River Road, right where it makes that hard turn by norm, norms transmission? As opposed to taking a number of houses, you run it off there, and then you just put it straight onto Back River Road? Maybe that's a thought, I don't know.
I can certainly ask if they looked at that concept.
Take, you'd be looking at taking maybe one, maybe two properties, or that discussion.
I'll certainly mention that.
Not taking, I should say, but you know what I mean.
Yeah.
I think it's if you did a full exchange, did north and southbound, it becomes more of a problem, but I don't know. This is what, Paul?
I believe that's part of Representative LaRue's plan. He made that comment when they made the suggestion about taking property to take the land, because the state owns land there on the other side of norms transmission. So, Representative LaRue did bring that up at the, at the hearing with DOT, and I think that might be part of this November 14th. It also could be exit 13, the exit 13 discussion that he, he had.
It could be that on November 14th.
It could be either one of those.
Yeah, yeah. All right, on this, it is, we'd like to have this codified in a letter that will go up to be part of the public hearing that was held October 3rd. Does that cover?
Yeah, just specifically naming those, those areas of town we discussed in this conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, because that, that was, that was the biggest situation, and the sidewalks on Wire Road would be a secondary issue for me. The sound barriers are very critical, and to Bill's point, if they could do something that won't attract graffiti, it would be wonderful, but I don't know how that all goes. So, I mean.
So, I just want to make sure that I have an idea, because it all has to be done by tomorrow. So, you want us to add those roads, and whatever Kyle has on here, if, if they're repeated or if they're not repeated, then we'll add the ones that Kyle has on here, too, having to do with sound and site barriers. And then you want to endorse putting sidewalks on both sides of the Wire Road?
And?
And, and both on Papooseck. Okay, is that so? Is there anything else?
You want them on both sides of Wire?
Both sides.
Both sides, yes.
Both sides.
Is there anything else?
At least one side, for sure.
We'll start with, we'll start with two.
Well, the only reason I say that is because we do have sidewalks to nowhere throughout the community, and I believe on the north side of Wire Road, there's already existing sidewalks on the one side. On the south side, I don't think there are any, and I don't know that, maybe, maybe you should just tell them two, but I get it if they're, one would be very important.
If we, yeah, we'll limit us.
Say two.
But I don't want to be greedy. I'm looking for a lot of other things as well.
Yeah, I want him to do something.
So.
Okay, so do you want to prioritize them, or not prioritize them, but just have them be in a certain order, just so they can? Or do you just include it in all, the whole of the letter?
I really like them to, it to be known that the community is, is very concerned about, you know, the decibel levels that, that will be impacting the neighborhoods. Bill's point about it should be free-flowing traffic, heavy, but moving at, at the highway rate of speed, as opposed to 20 miles an hour.
When they tested.
Right, and I suspect, they did testing on Chamberlain Road, not Chamber, yeah, Chamberlain, up at the end of Chamberlain Neighborhood a number of years ago, and put the earth berm up to accommodate that, because they, and they left those decibel meters there for a good period of time, and did find a couple of occasions, a couple of times in the day, that it exceeded the level that they said, okay, we can do this, so.
So, they might do the same thing, is just put, just place them there and, you know, and listen to it.
And I think they, I think they try to do that.
Over a period of time.
They might not want to right out of the gate, but I, I want to believe that they're going to recognize, you know, the real issue that it will pose for community, for neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
Is everybody good? Yes, Senator Daniels and Executive Counsel Wheeler are here, so we'd like to, Representative Barry. I think, I think not. You didn't need a vote on that, did you, Eileen, for that letter? You're good with it? Yeah, we're all set.
Thank you.
I know, I know I got myself.
Oh.
I didn't know where it was.
Shouldn't have pointed it out, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for being here.
Senator Gary Daniels, as you were talking about the sound barriers, and I attended that hearing, but one thing that I heard that I think you might want to add to the communication, if you, if, if you are aware of it, just south of 101 in Bedford, there is what they're calling a sound barrier, but it's basically like a six-foot stockade fence.
I know.
And it's there because of density requirements, I believe, by the federal government. In listening to the, the residents of Merrimack talking, I wonder how many of those are going to fall into that category where a sound barrier is not going to meet the definition of DOT? So, and I don't know how to fight that, because I've been fighting to try to get a sound barrier in Bedford, take the place of that six-foot stockade fence for four years. So, I'm just, just saying, you know, to make the council aware that the same thing may happen with, with some of the, some of the residents, and I think that's why DOT did not specify sound barriers in some places that the residents are saying, we need them.
Okay. I don't know how you deal with something like that, then.
Be aware.
Be aware of whatever the criteria is.
Yeah, we'll find out what are the criteria.
Do the decibel assessment, and hopefully we'll meet it.
It's a density thing. Bedford's running into a problem because they have two-acre zoning. So, you don't have enough houses in there to meet the federal density requirements, and therefore, the DOT in New Hampshire is saying, we can't do anything about it.
So, it's not a matter of decibels, it's a matter of how close the population.
Because those people with the six-foot stockade fence cannot stand in their backyard and have a conversation, because the decimal level is too, too high.
I think some of those areas, it would work, but not all of them.
What's the green?
Some of them would.
Yeah, Peter?
So, Senator, I mean, would our recommendation then be, and based upon what you said, be that we recommend a 30-foot-high berm? I mean, do we have to be specific or something, you know, to that effect?
As I started to say, I, I don't know that I have a solution to this. Perhaps Representative Barry?
Yeah.
No, it's Council Wheeler. I'm just, I just wanted to make you aware of it, because it's an issue when you talk about, you, we, we need sound barriers. DOT may look at that as something different, saying, okay, we can't put up the 30-foot sound barrier or whatever, but we can put up a six-foot stockade fence, and it's not going to do anything.
Some of our areas are pretty dense. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a matter, a little bit of history and process, so I held a public hearing in this room in the beginning of this year for the tenure highway plan. Tenure highway plan starts with the executive council, and we made sure that this project stayed, you know, in the tenure highway plan in a reasonable time slot. One of the things that came out of the hearing was that construction could start in 2021. We have to get all the permits in place, get a final design in place, and make all those decisions. And the construction could be phased, it could happen all at once, a little bit, it depends upon the revenues, you know, and, and how they come in, it depends upon traffic, and, and how many things do we want disrupted all at once? So, those decisions are yet to be made. I don't know if you're familiar with the special counsel process, but the, the special counsel are always made up of three executive counselors appointed by the governor and the full counsel to make the decisions, and it's kind of funny wording to determine the necessity for the project. So, your three special committee members have some discretion in conditioning their approval. For instance, a few years back, we had to have a special committee for a roundabout in Swansea, and the public input was, this roundabout is too small in diameter, it's too traffic calming, and they didn't want a two-inch lip on the cobbles that go around the roundabout, because it chews up everybody's tires. So, the special committee conditioned the determination of a necessity on a roundabout that had, I don't remember exactly, but like, we want it 30 feet bigger, and we only want that cobble to stick up an inch. So, we have some discretion in, in these grants, the special committee. And so, your input tonight is very important to the special committee, and even though DOT's official deadline is tomorrow for this project, my phone and my, you know, written comments to me don't have a deadline. It's expected, the special committee is expected to make a decision somewhere in the timeframe of a month to six weeks. So, if you think of other things, just, just, just get them to me. The sound wall, unless I heard wrong, this, there is going to be a sound wall, and there is in this plan for the Camp Sergeant Road co-op, probably is one of the best, call it bangs for the buck, there are a lot of dense, dense homes right there. And that, just to give a perspective to what sound wall is, that sound wall will be 17.5 feet tall, and it'll be a little bit of a double sound wall. They might overlap in the middle, there might be two, because of the, the way the ramp, southbound ramp comes in there. So, I'm here to get your input on that, and as chairman of this committee, I certainly will take it very seriously. We did very much hear about sound walls and sidewalks, and, you know, maybe we could trade you a sidewalk on Route 101A for a one-on-one road. So, we can talk about that later.
Excellent, Peter.
Council Wheeler and Senator, thank you for being here, and Representative Barry, I'm sorry, for being here. But the neighborhoods that I've, I've mentioned here are what I consider pretty dense. I mean, you're talking Webster Green condominium, there's 60 units all right there. Clay Street has, granted, it's probably got 20 houses, but all grouped together right on top of the highway. So, these areas are what I would consider are dense, so that, are condensed, excuse me, so, you know, these, to me, are not, there's a house here and a house there, so that, that's where that's coming from when I talk about these neighborhoods. And I do remember testimony from Clay Street and Ministerial Drive, and, and, you know, I imagine the special committee will, will get together and take a look at some maps and densities and such as that, and get you as many sound walls as we can. Thank you.
Are you just? You heard me, thank you. You're staying. I have to take care of this gentleman next to me. He's only trying to help me.
All right, we're all set then on, on this item? Feel free to stay, please stay right there. I appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is removal of the Merrimack toll plazas, as I mentioned earlier. I had a quick conversation with Council Wheeler and Senator Daniels about this meeting that they're going to be having yesterday, they had a meeting, I guess. And so, anyhow, I wanted to, Bill had brought it to our attention a couple of weeks ago, and I wanted to make sure we had a little bit further discussion to find out what we might be interested in, is the cost of accepting it and those type of things.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, I didn't know, Kyle, if you, no, it's that? Now, we can't see it. Okay. Senator Daniels, did you, would you be able to tell us what you, you had your meeting yesterday?
Be, be happy to kind of bring you up to date on the whole, whole initiative, if you will, please. As, as the tenure plan went through the legislature, in the end, I was able to put an amendment on the tenure plan to create a study committee to look at the removal of the totals at exit 10 and 11. That did end up passing. There was a study committee that was formed of three House members, one senator. I volunteered to be on that and managed to get to be chair of that, which was fine with me. We have received, in the two meetings that we've had, we, we have received significant documentation from the DOT. from DOT. Rating agencies have all rated the New Hampshire Turnpike as an A-plus or an A-1 rating. DOT is taking the position that if we remove the tolls at Exit 10 or 11, that that will decrease the rating of the highway system. The bonds on Exit 10 and 11 are thirty-year bonds, they were put in around 1990, 1991, so they're looking to expire in 2020. I raised a question yesterday, because I had been told that the bond on Exit 12 expired at 2020, excuse me, 2024, even though that's already gone, and yet the documentation I had said that that opened on November 29, 1990. So, the math isn't working out, so I sort of suspect that the, that bond might expire in 2020 as well. The reports that I got showed an inequity for Merrimack versus other communities, in that other communities, you were able to access it from the highway and not have to pay the tolls that Merrimack has had to pay over the years. Merrimack felt, excuse me, Merrimack tolls were being used by the DOT to keep the people on the Effie Everett Turnpike, because they felt that if they removed the tolls at Exit 10, 11, or 12, that people would be getting off early and trying to get around the toll without paying for it. Well, when they put in the airport access toll there, we all know that that doesn't matter anymore, because you can make the loop-up around, and you still don't have to pay the tolls. So, I don't think the removal of the toll at Exit 12 has had any effect whatsoever on that. I think they're seeing more people avoiding the toll going up around that airport access road. Merrimack tolls are revenue losers. That, what we're being told is that the, excuse me, the revenue from Merrimack tolls have never covered the operating costs, the maintenance, or the debt service of those tolls. Those tolls together bring in 2.6 million, approximately 1.3 million each, which is 1% of the Turnpike system. That's per year. The 2018 operating and maintenance cost for the two tolls for this year is 1.12 million, but does not include debt service, toll collection system, maintenance, or the EZ Pass customer service fees. So, you can take even more off the profit there. One of the amazing facts that came out is, they were talking, I asked how much it cost, this came a question, I want to thank Representative Barry, because he was involved with the removal of the Exit 12 toll, so he's had some good questions to be able to have me feed the department. And one of them is, "How much does it cost to collect the toll?" And that cost of collection is anywhere from 20 cents to 93 cents. At Exit 11, it costs 93 cents to collect the 50-cent toll. So, you know, our contention is, you know, if these tolls are money losers, let's get rid of them. In the discussions that we've had, we found out that when Exit 10 was put in, that it also, the state also put in Industrial Drive and Continental Boulevard from Duncan down to Penachuck Square. And so, one of the things I wanted the council to discuss is to whether, if we were able to get the, a state to remove those tolls, would the town be willing to take over the maintenance of Industrial Drive and Continental Boulevard from Duncan down to Penachuck Square? I believe I read somewhere in the stack of information that that was recently tarred, I believe, at the, paved at a cost of somewhere around $650,000. I'm being told that the yearly maintenance on that is about $100,000. Yesterday, as we had our discussions, we answered, we got, we received answers for questions that we had from the department, and I could sense in the House members maybe a little bit of a lack of interest. Is that putting it mildly?
Been there before.
Yeah. The three House members have been presented with proposals to remove Merrimack tolls multiple times before, and therefore, they're treating this as just another attempt. There is an acknowledgement of inequity, they understand that Merrimack is getting hit harder with tolls in other communities, but they appear not to be willing to support the removal of tolls unless a stable source of funding can be found to absorb any lost revenue. They do, did seem to be willing to entertain some proposal that they haven't seen before. Otherwise, they don't seem to be interested, as they're looking at as just the same old proposal. So, I'm in the mode of trying to find something new and exciting for them to look at. Some of the things that were brought up is potential things, and this is where I'd be interested in having your feedback on this. I guess there was an initiative in the past that would cap the monthly cost that's applied to an EZ Pass from people that go through the tolls frequently. They determined that at that time, there would be 33 trips through the tolls to basically reach that point. There's another possibility right now of forcing agencies that are currently tapping the Highway Fund to go before finance and justify their agency cost as opposed to coming out of there. Because right now, I think the last I had, figure I had seen was there's some $75 million that is being taken out of that fund, that funds things like, you know, the state police, the judicial system, fishing game, anybody who can indirectly get their hooks into that money. And that's something that they seem to be able to do without having to go before the budget process, though I think maybe in doing that, we might, we might find, you know, a couple million dollars in there. I mean, that's what we're talking about here in trying to make up. There is an expectation that traffic is going to increase. What I need to do is to do a little bit more research and find out how much they expect the traffic to increase, and would that increase in traffic make up the revenue that would be lost if we take out the tolls? One idea that hasn't been floated before is putting in some legislation that has a trigger in there, so that you're monitoring the toll traffic as DOT does, and if they, if we determine the level of traffic that's needed to compensate for the loss in revenue, and say we go two years in a row and achieve that threshold of traffic, then that would automatically initiate the removal of the tolls based on that. We could, we could implement all electronic tolling, but that comes also at a cost. One other possibility is, we don't try to take out both tolls at once, we take out one toll. And then, finally, there's also the question of whether we want to try to do this in 2020, or do we want to try to do this in conjunction with the widening of Effie Everett Turnpike? The advantage to that would be that you'll have some of the heavy equipment already there, and you won't absorb the extra cost of bringing it in just to take down the toll booths. For me.
So, if I may, more for the two relative newbies, Thornton and Healy, that the way it's set up is that the governor and council identify how much the tolls are going to be, and the legislature, the Senate, and the House identify where the tolls will be.
And the discount.
And, oh, I'm sorry, and he keeps reminding, and the discount, because there is a discount if you have, if you have a, an EZ Pass that you purchased from New Hampshire. You can get one outside the state, they don't have the discount. So, that's part of the reason why we have Counselor Wheeler helping us getting these things squared away. It'll work out to be numbers, there's an awful lot of emotion, they brought up letters written to the DOT about Merrimack wanting, wanting the access to the highway, and we said we would do almost anything it was thirty years ago, but that you can't believe what these people are still saying to us. I think the issue is, where is, if you're going to put a toll up to run it, it ought to be where the highest traffic is. Why have it on a low-traffic count area, number one, and number two, it ought to be relatively spread across the state? I'm actually pitching to Counselor Wheeler now, rather than to you guys, because, you know, right here, we're preaching to the choir. So, that's, I just want to clarify the administrative piece of it.
Thanks.
And one other, one other piece that I'm working on, and I sent a letter to the Attorney General, like Representative Barry said, you get an EZ Pass discount if you buy a transponder in New Hampshire. So, we have a lot of outer staters who buy New Hampshire transponders. So, the question to him is, would it be constitutional if we just said, "We're not selling transponders to outer staters"? That would give us a, you know, a place to make up some revenue. So, that, we're trying all angles, I know we've been at this for a long time, but I don't like to quit till we win, so.
I always thought it was a miracle that 12 came off, but that was just me. For me, well, I didn't realize that all three were losers, well, now two. I always thought that our Exit 11 was a moneymaker, the other two were losers. Because it's a loser, that really puts it in a different light for me. Why would we even keep it, as you had suggested?
Well, that's what I thought, too, and of course, as Representative Barry says, they're referring back to a letter from 1986.
But if it's, right, it's costing the system 45 cents.
Where the council asked for the, for the tolls to be put in to increase business, and I make the pitch to the department that, okay, that's fine, but, you know, I think we have an obligation, if a bond is going to last for 30 years, when that 30 years is up, let's go away, and let's also acknowledge that while it has helped Merrimack become a business hub, it has also helped the state of New Hampshire, because we're taking in that business profits tax and the business enterprise tax. So, and it has been a win-win situation. And, you know, I have to point out, we've seen as much growth down in Nashua, and they don't have any toll.
Right.
So.
And just to keep it clear, that actually, it wasn't really strictly for, it was for business only because we couldn't get traffic onto the highway, because it was so jammed up, and so it was because of an inadequate system to begin with. And I'm going to defend the selectmen of the day and say, "They were being held hostage", is what it was. And so, I don't accept the argument, I don't accept it now, and I've not accepted it for the past 30 years, but, Eileen?
Just one, I could get this totally wrong, but I'm not much of a politician, certainly, because that's not my job, but why would, why would anyone keep toll plazas open that are losers and not close them out of spite to the town of Merrimack?
The answer is, while they're losers, they're losers in the fact that they're not covering the cost of the tolls. However, they are bringing in some revenue, but, you know, they need this much, they're bringing in this much?
Right.
And if you take it away, then the level is down here, and they're losing that much that they have to make up. So, I'm not saying that we have to make up everything that covers the cost, I'm saying that we only have to make up that difference between zero and what's losing now, you know, but I think we have to just.
If the net loss is a loss, it's still a loss, whether it's in the revenue versus expenditure category, it doesn't really matter. It's just, if you put up a toll, it costs 93 cents to collect a 50-cent toll, why would you keep it up except for, and talk to the town about, you know, accepting Continental Boulevard as out of spite? That's all I can, that's all I, it's, I don't know how to even ask that question any differently.
Well, and I totally agree with you. I mean, we're fighting bureaucracy, is what we're fighting, and.
Well, I think they should be ashamed of themselves.
Let me make it, this cabinet, let me make it very clear, that's one toll where it costs 93 cents to raise the 50 cents, that's the automated toll, no, that's where the person is sitting there. The other tolls that are overhead, they're still making money, they're not making enough money to cover the whole thing, and we need to figure out how to convince politically that process.
Just, I'm sorry, but if you're not making enough, if you're, if it's costing you more than money than you're bringing in, it's a loss, and for the state to continue to take, to take a position that we're going to leave the tolls in there and lose money every year just to, just so Merrimack gets shafted, I just, it's astounding to me, I just, I don't understand it.
But their position is, you still need to take care of the maintenance of the Turnpike.
That's right. Why does Merrimack have to do that?
Well, that is my argument, and.
No, I appreciate it. You're right. Peter? Oh, Bill was waiting.
Me, too.
Go ahead. Just to echo on Eileen's point, and she stole my thunder, I'm kind of shocked that three House members are worried about losing money on a toll booth that's already losing money. That's just, that just defies logic. The thing, but circling back, the thing that's always frustrated me is looking at a place like Manchester, where the DOT is putting up signs that tell all the drivers that it's your Turnpike dollars, how it works, but there are no tolls in Manchester. And I find, I just, I find that, I find that very difficult. The comment that I do want to make is, and I want to thank Director Fox for putting together the cost sheet regarding Continental Boulevard, it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's sobering, it's a sobering amount of money that this council is going, if we're going to contemplate taking a toll, taking down a toll, and, you know, in assuming responsibility, there's always a price tag involved, I just was shocked at the amount of money that was involved on that particular, and I think the thing that really sticks out to me is the drainage maintenance. You know, we're an MS4 community, that's, that's a, that continues to be an unfunded mandate, that this community has no idea what it's going to cost us, and this is just one of, one of three projects that Merrimack potentially is going to be assuming those particular costs as it relates to the MS4 piece. And I think the other concern that I talked with you, Senator Daniels privately, and I'll tell to my councils, is that the pavement overlay. You know, we have no idea, you know, the condition of Continental Boulevard running all the way down from Duncan east to Penachuck Square. And while, while the cost estimates, you know, for me, based on some of the things that I've seen throughout the years, are relatively reasonable, you know, those things can change once you, you know, once you rip up that particular roadway and you actually get to see what's underneath there. You know, this isn't, no, we're not talking about something scraping and replacing, I mean, I'm actually, you know, potentially thinking that we're going to have to grind that entire road and re-level it and repave it at some particular point, and, you know, that road's been there for a significant amount of period, and since I've been living in town for coming close to 15 years, I don't ever remember seeing any type of, you know, that type of grinding work that's been done on that particular roadway, outside of repaving that roadway, you know, for, every four or five years. So, that's how I'm looking at it right now, and I think that needs to be, at least from where I sit, from my perspective, that needs to be a part of the conversation between us and the state as to what's an appropriate cost, and is there a potential to cost share that particular road if it's deemed that, you know, work needs to be done, outside of the ordinary maintenance, which, you know, I think all of us here, you know, we understand that maintenance is a factor to everything. It's just, it's kind of like caveat empta, you know, buyer beware. So, that's how I'm looking at it right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter in the bar.
I agree with Bill. Um, oh, I, I agree with Bill. The cost, the cost to accept the maintenance of these roadways is, uh, is way, way outweighs the taking of the tolls. It doesn't make sense. And I agree with, uh, the town manager, um, if a toll is losing money, we, you know, we shouldn't have it here. Um, and again, it's a bureaucracy we're fighting, and we've got a few other counselors, and I'm not sure where they're from. They could be from up north and don't care about what goes on down here. But I still don't think, uh, I, I don't think that we should, uh, accept an offer such as this. Um, I know we're trying to think out of the box and trying to do things, but I, I, I don't agree with this. And one other thought crosses my mind, because I've heard it mentioned, is what's to say if we were to agree to this anyways? That the, the, the turnpike, uh, the DOT decides they're gonna put, uh, set a tolls down in Exit Eight just after the Pennechuck overpass. There, and now we're back to square one again with all the Merrimack motorists paying tolls again. So, I mean, they, they could throw those up anywhere they want. Um, you know, Nashua had the political clout years ago when they were doing the widening down by Spick Road and everything to get the, get the toll booths kicked out of there, but we apparently don't have that, that political clout. Um, you know, I appreciate you gentlemen are here looking for alternative ideas, um, and I'm not here to BQ up at all. But I just don't agree with this and, um, frankly, you know, at some point, those tolls have gotta go. I don't know what it's gonna take, but I, I haven't heard anything yet that I, I, I think's acceptable, so.
Barbara?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with my counterparts here that trading, you know, a couple of toll booths for two hundred thousand dollars a year in extra costs that get passed on to the taxpayers, it's not a reasonable exchange. Not only that, but I wonder if your numbers are totally correct, because, you know, we've got Exit Ten going off to the Merrimack outlets. And based on how many cars I see from Massachusetts and elsewhere, I don't think they all know the back roads from Nashua to get across the border. So, they're paying tolls. So, I'm not so sure those numbers on Exit of Ten are actually correct. And that may be something you guys want to look into, but I'm, I'm in full agreement. I don't, this is not a fair exchange just to get rid of two toll booths. They shouldn't be there in the first place. Because I'll bet you that two-twenty will roll around and we'll still have those toll booths up. Thanks, guys.
First of all, I want to thank you for trying to think of something for us. I think you, you have to get kudos for that, and I appreciate what you've done with Exit, and Representative Barry. It was a miracle, Exit Twelve. And I know you're trying for the others, so first of all, we have to acknowledge that. Uh, Councilor Wheeler, the reason I asked if you were gonna be here, I'm not sure if it ended up being in the ten-year plan or it was discussed and wasn't put in there, but at some point, there was a discussion about moving the Bedford tolls to below Exit Ten. Does that sound familiar?
There was discussion about moving the Bedford tolls south so that it would, i- i- if it would pick up the people headed on, down the airport access road, they'd have to pay that toll first.
Correct.
Um, but as part of that discussion is, is that was stimulus package money that built the airport, uh, access road, and there were conditions on that funding that there couldn't be a toll on it. Um, but we got the money because it was a shovel-ready project.
Correct.
And conditioned. So, the discussion, um, wrapped around would the Federal Highway Administration, um, now that some years have passed, let us move the toll booths, um, south to catch the airport access road? And of course, DOT loves that idea because it would capture, you know, a lot, a lot more revenue. There was also discussion in the ten-year highway plan, and I do not like how it unfolded. Uh, like I said, the, it starts with a council, then it's handed to the House, and then it's handed to the Senate. Um, there was discussion about raising, uh, in fact, it passed, it was passed about raising the, the main line toll in Bedford fifty percent. And I fought that increase, and there was a empty promise that if you do this now and spend all this money, um, then, you know, maybe the, the, um, maybe we take out the ramp tolls. But the, the two were not connected. It's like, raise this toll and maybe we'll do this. And so, I thought that was a bad deal, uh, for Merrimack, and a fifty percent increase on, on the main line was unacceptable as well. And they had lots of threats like, we won't build and widen your FEA return pipe, but, but guess what? It's still in the plan. It's, you know, it's, it's headed down the pike and, at a reasonable, uh, time with, with some construction starting in twenty-twenty-one. Um, so, but that was the discussion around, um, the tolls that was in the ten-year highway plan.
But it was not put in.
The fifty percent increase was put in.
Right.
And with a lot of, of work and discussion, the governor vetoed, or, or what we call negated. The three members of the council voted for it, and I and Councilor Kenny voted against it. And so, it passed the, the council, but the governor negated it. He said, we're not gonna do that.
Let me ask you a theoretical. I know that all the states are really wanting to get the booth list, the over-highway tolls, what do they call them?
All electric.
High-speed H O.
All electronic tolling, AET is the acronym.
Okay.
Um, it is scheduled in the ten-year highway plan for Route, um, Ninety-five, uh, in Hampton. Uh, it's something that I don't agree with if you're not gonna have a cash lane. I don't, uh, you know, the all part is what I disagree with. I have no problem with the, with the high-speed lanes. But I still think for, you know, some of our citizen, you know, our poorest, uh, citizens, on, you know, they need to be able to pay cash. Um, and, and, and not have to have a credit card and set up a bank account with the minimum and deposit in it. I mean, sometimes EZ Pass depends on your circumstances, wants a thirty or forty dollar balance upfront.
That's right.
And so, um, I don't mind all electronic tolling, but I don't, I want to make, my position is we should keep at least cap, you know, one cash lane.
So, I guess my concern is, I understand why the feds would say you can't move the Bedford tolls a little bit south to be able to catch it. But gee, moving it below Exit Ten is significantly more south. And if in fact you're trying to get away from the, um, the normal tolls that we have to the overhead, that wouldn't take much to establish that. I guess my suspicion is, I don't trust the state. And I, and I'm not killing the messenger.
Sure.
I'm separating because I just have this uneasy feeling that if we were to agree to this, they're not gonna lie to us. They'll take the tolls out, but they'll put one at the bottom of Exit, below Exit Ten, which has, has already been implied, means nothing. So, I guess, and this is the attitude that has been established because of our long relationship with the tolls in the state. So, it's been, um.
It's not something I would support, by the way, and the, the toll booth in Bedford, we just built it.
I understand.
And that was millions and millions of dollars just for, for that toll plaza. And to tear it down and move it, you know, five years later, it's ridiculous.
As it says down in Nashua, they had the, um, had built down there, they had the tunnels underneath built and everything. So, don't, you know, if you have the political willpower, a couple of million dollars doesn't mean much.
Yeah, well, someone kept that from being built and kept the Merrimack tolls in.
Yes, yeah, which, and that's one of the things that we have a history of. So, I guess that's my concern, is that if there was somehow to guarantee, but there is no way, you can't. Things can change in the future, but I, I do want to emphasize that I appreciate what you're trying to do. And you're trying to help us do that, and I know you've done it in the past, and you're continuing to try. I guess you're getting the consensus is, thanks, but no thanks.
No, I, 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 with the comments I've heard, I, uh, I was definitely interested in the idea, uh, but before I even saw the, the cost, potential cost associated with it, I'm looking at the, the industrial interchange and Continental Boulevard, it's the widest, would be the widest of any of our roads. So, the obvious maintenance cost for digging in deep and having to do the greater things than plowing, um, are, would be huge. And so, uh, so, so I agree with the words that I've been hearing from everybody, but I definitely appreciate it. And, uh, Tom?
Yeah, thank you. I, I want to go back and, and better understand, um, because it does seem a little bizarre that we might be paying forty-three cents to collect fifty cents. When you talk about ninety-three cents to collect fifty cents, is that strictly the, the booth that has a man or a person in it that's collecting it? And the other booth beside it is not that same number, or is that the exit?
That, that is Exit Eleven. Um, I can't say, it's a booth.
Okay, so there's a different number for, I mean, there's, there's an overall number that's different if you combine the traffic that goes through the cash lane.
If you can, if you combine everything in the system together, the open road tolling and all that, it comes out to sixteen cents per its transaction.
Well, I don't want to combine everything because that, that gets, that throws the baby out with the bathwater. If you look at just Exit Eleven, but you combine the electronic toll with the cash lane, do we have any idea what that cost is to collect fifty cents?
You should, you have that.
That's, that's the ninety-three cents.
I don't know. The, the, the toll, the exit itself, not just the one booth. We have, we have the numbers, uh, we have the numbers, and to your point, we, we've had them updated regularly, so they are real.
Hold the microphone for me.
You gotta get the mic closer, sorry.
The, the numbers we have are real. They've got to report them. It's, uh, some of it's, it's, it's done automatically with a, with a toll booth counter. Uh, the, wh- what we're talking about is if you look at the cost that they've allocated to these tolls, then they're saying they don't, they don't cover the total cost. And if you, if you add in the cost of, uh, retirement, uh, retirement benefits, uh, health insurance afterwards, those aren't factored into the cost that they've given us. We can't get them to add all that back in because they don't know how long, they, they don't want to get their actuarial people involved and say, this is the case and this is a new number. So, they're looking at the today's cost, okay? It's, it's, I won't, I won't go there.
But that's an important factor.
It, it is, and I've been, I've been trying to fight that for a while, but they, they, they're not gonna do that. The, the, let me change tactics just a little bit for you. As, as we were fighting the, the earlier tolls, I went, I went to the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, and I asked them to poll their people and say, how many of your businesses that are right on Route Three are benefiting? Because you've got more traffic there. What, what you folks have looked at is the serious increase in traffic from four to six every night and from, what, six-thirty to eight in the morning that's going up and down Route Three. That's gotta impact the businesses either positively or negatively. Some may find something that, oh, yeah, they stop and they get a haircut because they can wait in line to get it done, you know? Or the floral shop, or, or that thing. And at, at the time, they, they didn't give me any positive factor that said, yeah, we, we really need it, we're gonna fight for it. I'm, I'm a bit, I'm a bit disappointed that you folks are taking the, the, the position you're doing. I, I think it's a little bit short-sighted. If you're, if you're looking at maybe, uh, a hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand dollar maintenance a year that, that you're gonna roll in and you're gonna avoid that traffic on Route Three, that impact?
But Representative Barry, we're looking at five hundred thousand just for Continental Boulevard.
Uh, that's not the number I saw, but.
Well, I don't, twenty, yeah. Well, yeah, but, two hundred.
Can I suggest that if, if that is your concern, then maybe focus on getting rid of Exit Eleven? Because Exit Ten came with Industrial Drive and Continental Boulevard. I think it's gonna be difficult to separate that whole thing. So, if Continental Boulevard and Industrial Drive are your concerns, then keep Exit Ten. Try to get, try to get rid of Exit Eleven and then see what develops in the future with that, with Exit Ten.
I, I understand that. Um, if, if we throw Industrial Boulevard into the mix of maintenance, then, then it becomes a much bigger number as well.
Absolutely.
But back, back when the NPO was built, they offered money to the, to the state to be able to pull down those, those exits, those toll booths to allow them to have better access to their patrons. Do you, do you recall that at all, or did you even know that?
I, I was not aware of that.
I was on the planning board, and they actually made an appeal to the governor at the time to make a donation and asked, you know, what kind of a number would help? I don't think they ever got a viable number back. But I, I know NPO was interested, whether they would do anything now or not. I, I know that would definitely impact their customers and their business to remove those tolls. And, and so, there are benefits. Uh, i- if the number that you're asking us to come up with is, is containable, I would support it and it makes sense. But, but if two to three hundred thousand dollars a year to, to take over Industrial and Continental, you know, it could be just a little bit out of hand.
Let me ask, who put together the chart that's up there?
This, this was from Kyle, and it's only talking about Continental, not talking about Industrial Boulevard at all. Which is a wider road, shorter, but much more significant and certainly very heavily traveled with NPO and, uh. Fidelity, excuse me.
It was just, I say fidelity used as well.
I was gonna say digital BA, no, no, fidelity.
Okay, so, so my, my question is, our next meeting is on the twenty-fourth of this month. What is the message you want me to bring back to my committee? Or is there someone from the council that would like to attend that meeting and express the desire of the council?
I'd be proud to have you.
Put your mic, uh, mic on, please.
Representative Barry, I'm a little disappointed in, in the position you've taken. That you would accept, you would accept the cost of maintaining these roads for the taxpayers, of which yourself included. As opposed to this, I disagree with that, and I think that's short-sighted, okay? Because I think that there's a good likelihood that the tolls can get built south of us, and we're still stuck with them. So, I take, I take exception to that comment.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to do is move on to, uh, the next chat item because I, I, you know, well, I'd like to chat with you about that going up there, but, um.
I was gonna say, I don't mind riding shotgun with, with Councilor Alblar on that as well.
Because that'd be good, because I, I appreciate, you know, the whole idea. I just think that the cost would be substantial in our budget, the way, what we're tackling with impacts to this year's budget coming up and all. The, the one thing I wanted to point out about Exits Ten and Eleven, talking about the manned toll booth, okay? Exit Ten is six AM to nine PM. They run two shifts. You got two tolls, so you got four people. You have four people manning Exit Ten, and then Exit Eleven, you've got three shifts, four to, four AM to twelve noon, twelve noon to eight PM, eight PM to four AM on both sides. So, now you're talking six people that are manned. So, now you've got, you've got salaries, you've got benefits, you've got. And by the way, we're not even talking about whether they're working full-time or part-time, so that could be, that could be a part-time job.
A lot of time the polls, the tolls are not manned at night.
Correct, correct.
I'm sorry, you said that, I misunderstood.
The midnight, midnight shift, basically, it's kind of an honor system.
So, it's an honor, okay, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that.
That's not true at Exit Eleven, is it?
No, I didn't, see, I didn't think, so at eleven, at ten.
At ten, it is an honor system.
Eleven, eleven is manned. I think eleven is manned, which is why I'm raising that point.
No, that's why they still have that fifty cent throwing.
I was gonna say, that, that may account for the additional cost at Exit Eleven.
So, it's not manned at a certain time, and then fifty cents is opened up and EZ Pass is open. Just FYI?
I thought all the, I, I thought, I thought the change booths are gone. I thought that change basket was, was done.
Still that one there?
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, that, that meeting is on the October twenty-fourth at one o'clock in State House One-O-three. State House, the State House Room One-O-three, it's the finance room.
At what time do you say, I'm sorry?
One o'clock, one to three.
All right. Okay.
It is an open meeting.
I'd like to, uh, everybody's all set for that. Um, I'd like to move on to item number four, which is the One-O, One-O-One A widening proj- project and the sidewalk, sidewalk discussion, which we had a hearing on this, I don't know if it was a month ago now, I can't remember. And, um, and we did have a discussion on the sidewalks, and so, I, uh, I, I didn't know if you would like to give us, you know, any information you might have on that, Councilor Wheeler?
Thank you. Well, we did have a, a public hearing on the One-O-One A widening project and the relocation of the intersection of Craftsman Lane and.
and the relocation of the intersection of Craftsman Lane and Boston Post Road. I, I think most people were in agreement about the realignment of Craftsman's Lane, making it much safer into a T-shaped intersection. And then also the, the state is in discussions with the church about the little cut-through road there. And I guess the town of Merrimack, of what to do with that. They just want to make sure they can get their buses in and out of the school in a, in orderly fashion in the, you know, in the, in the lineup. So, that, those talks are ongoing. Again, I think most people were in favor of this project that adds turning lanes. One, if you're going eastbound into the, where the apple pie place was, miss that pie. And if you're coming westbound onto Continental Boulevard, a, a dedicated turning lane there. And, and improvements in turning into, if you were going into St. John Newman or Friendly's now, improvements there. And I think most people are generally in agreement with that. The sidewalk issue came up. I think that's one of the biggest issues and one reason I want to talk to you about the sidewalks is because if the state builds it, they expect the town to maintain it. So, I started looking, driving by there, because I've been working in Merrimack for the last few weeks, coming by there every day. And there is an existing sidewalk in front of the Harley Davidson dealer and then crosses the Home Depot entrance. Sure, okay, we'll wait for the picture. And then it goes, while he's looking, it goes in front of the Dunkin' Donuts and the Pizza Hut. And Dunk, Dunkin' Donuts and Pizza Hut, I, I came by, somebody, their landscape guys keep that sidewalk nice. But the part in front of the BMW dealer, you know, until we recently got torrential rains, it still has a winter sand all over it. And then when you get e, uh, west of Pizza Hut, the brush hasn't even been cut and the, and the sidewalk is very narrow. So, that's a pretty good representation, you know, of what's there. I can't recall ever seeing anybody walk on that sidewalk. So, the proposal wants to put a sidewalk on the PC Connection side of the road as well. So, I'm concerned whether you guys want that sidewalk and you want to maintain that sidewalk. So, that was my tongue-in-cheek comment of trading you a side marker, one-on-one A for one-on-wire road. There were, PC Connections also had some concerns about their parking lot and they have sent the special committee a letter asking us to delay our decision. And not quite sure why, they want to maybe bring us more information. But I think it's also important to note that the nice grassy area that abuts 101A is mostly owned by the state. And in this proposal, they want to put in a water, stormwater treatment swales, which I don't think, um, um, PC Connection is enamored by that. It would affect that nice grassy, uh, grassy green hill. And I'm told by DOT that even the trees that are there are actually on state property. Um, and PC Connection puts a good amount of their snow there on the state property from plowing their parking lot, which they couldn't do if there were water treatment swales there. They can't fill them with snow, the, the highway runoff, uh, wouldn't work. So, I'm, I'm specifically looking for your input, I think, any input of course, but your specific input on whether you want another sidewalk to maintain on the PC Connection side of the road.
Bill. Thank you, and.
I don't know why I always forget him, I know he's doing this and I always forget him, sorry, Bill.
I am going to apologize to Council Wheeler in advance because he heard my testimony on this. So, Council Wheeler, I apologize for the redundancy for what I'm about to communicate. I had expressed my vehement opposition to the sidewalk on the south side. And in fairness, it's not the first time I've said, I've said it, they, they presented it at the NRPC about a year and a half ago. I raised that, I raised that same objection of having a sidewalk on the south side that they ought to be focusing on, excuse me, connectivity between Craftsman's Lane and Continental Boulevard connecting up with Natta Cook Road. And I raised that same issue again, that if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, and, and I agree with Council Wheeler, nobody uses that sidewalk. But if, if you want people to use that sidewalk, you have a unique opportunity to connect two neighborhoods. The neighborhoods Craftsman Lane, Boston Post Road, Severance Bridge Road can get increased connectivity by building, by extending those improvements to Craftsman Lane, by putting a sidewalk there and then doing the same exact thing down by Tell Rico, going, going eastbound on the, on the northbound side of Continental Boulevard connecting up with Natta Cook Road. Because you've got neighborhoods up on, on Natta Cook Road. Now, that makes sense in terms of, of increasing pedestrian access by connecting two neighborhoods to provide them pedestrian access down to Penetech Square. And it makes the crosswalks that you're proposing at the intersection of 101 and Continental by, by Little Sprouts and St. John Newman. Now, those sidewalks make much more sense because now people can go there, they can cross, and now they can move eastward down Nashua. They can go to Target, they can go to Texas, they can get down to Brewster's, not Brewster's, Stone, Stone Cold Kramer. You know, the, proposing a sidewalk there, then people aren't gonna be going west, walking west because you've got Hall Avenue and then you've got nothing but the, the swamp and the railroad tracks going all the way down. And you don't hit anything until you hit Frederick's. And if I'm working at Connection, I want to go to Frederick's, well, guess what, I'm getting in my car. I'm getting in my car and I'm driving there because there's no point walking there. But if I have the opportunity to, 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 to use the sidewalk and, and get over to, to Home Depot to pick up, I don't know, a screwdriver or for people that are, that are at the Merrimack Valley Church that want to walk down, go, go for breakfast, go for lunch someday. And now you're making, now you've, you're, you're making that area make sense in terms of, in terms of pedestrian traffic. I don't want this community to assume responsibility for a sidewalk that nobody's, nobody's gonna use. I mean, if, if you take the opportunity and look at the employees that work at Connection, they're walking across the parking lot and they're cutting through the parking lot to get to Friendly's or they're using, they're using the, the weaving in around, through the parking lots of St. John Newman and Friendly's to get up to the sidewalk to be able to either cross to go over to Penetech Square or to go down to, to, like I said, we're targeting in, in Texas Roadhouses, so. It's bad, it's bad enough that we have a sidewalk on the, on the westbound side of 101A that for all intents and intents and purposes, the town hasn't, hasn't kept up its, its responsibility of the sidewalk. But all that being said, if you improve and you, and you create the ability for people to use it, then I, I'm, I'm not gonna lose, I'm, I'm not gonna fight over maintaining a sidewalk if I know there's the potential is there for somebody to use it. On the south side of the street at Connection, you're gonna build something and, and nobody's gonna use that. Nobody's gonna use it whatsoever. And I, and I think quite honestly, they've, they've, they're creating an additional burden on Connection. And based on the testimony that occurred that night, I got the drift that DOT hadn't really had the type of substantive conversation with Connection that needed to happen, which I, I wasn't impressed with, to be, to be candid with you. That's, those are my rationales, why I don't, it's, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, nobody's gonna use it. And yet, the taxpayers are gonna have to sweep it and plow it. So, thank you.
I think Tom had his hand.
So, I, I'll make this short, to what, I kinda, I, I agree with Bill, but no. PC Connection, they have a thousand employees. If, if they don't want it, I'm not gonna really, you know, tick off a taxpayer. They're a good, they're a good company of ours and I don't think we should put them on. And I don't see, I walk that, I wouldn't even walk on that sidewalk. Even if there wasn't a sidewalk that I wouldn't walk, because I'm afraid of your life because of people flying on that road. And I don't want to connect that sidewalk so people are walking into Nashua and taking the business in Nashua to Target and things like that. So, my answer is no.
I, I agree with my, both my fellow councilors, I don't think we need that sidewalk. I'm still trying to get over how that crosswalk at Continental and 101A is gonna actually work out, especially at rush hours. So, you know, I, I agree and I don't think we need to put that on the taxpayers. And I guess we need to look at better maintenance down there on the existing sidewalk.
And actually, just, the state does the same thing though, because on Bedford Road overpass, it's always got a field going through those cracks. So, I appreciate it though, if we have and we're supposed to maintain it. But, yeah. So, I'd say, I, I'm agreeing with the comments on the southern sidewalk for sure. So, is, does anybody have any further comment after we get the direction?
I got it.
I'll agree if you take the tolls out.
So, one sidewalk and not, the one that exists, you want to keep there? And the one that, that they're proposing on the Connection side you do not want, is that what you're saying?
PC Connection, yes.
Okay.
What's that?
Is it correct? I, I, I don't know if everybody, there's a few councillors that have it.
I, actually, I would argue for the sidewalk, but that's because I know a lot of people at PC Connections do walk. They constantly are looping around St. John Newman Church. I suspect they might use that sidewalk and loop around their parking lot and, and have access. And I, I know that if we don't get sidewalks when the opportunity exists, we're never gonna get sidewalks there. And so, if anything else were to develop or need or want, the only way to get it is to go ahead and put it in place. I realize there's some, some requirements to maintain it. I think we have the capacity and capability to do that, probably better than we have been. And, and shame on us for, for what we've been doing, but we should step up to our responsibilities. But I, I'm not as convinced that it's a bad idea. I do agree with Council Boyd that the sidewalk should be extended completely on the other side of, of the road to make those connections. I've walked on those sidewalks, I've walked down 101A towards Nashua, having dropped my car off for repair and going down to Starbucks and things like that. And, yeah, the traffic's a little crazy there, zipping down the road and you gotta be a little careful. You don't want to be walking along the curb. But I, I think people do walk there or could walk there if it was made and available.
Okay. So, I think we're all set, where there's an understanding, no need for a vote or anything, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add this, um, the, it could still stay in the plan that there be a signalized crossing from the PC Connections entrance over toward Craftsman Lane and a short section of sidewalk from the western Home Depot entrance. And you get just around the corner there to Craftsman Lane and there already is another short section of sidewalk there you could, we could, you know, connect the two. That might make sense. And the other possibility is, in the design, if you want to, you know, we, if you want to leave the space for the sidewalk for the future, that, that could be done too and just not build it and that would have no cost in Merrimack.
That would be good. That would be good.
Yeah, I, I agree with you folks really. And part of it is because of what Connection said when, when we had the last hearing. It's, it's not just the, that they've kept it as a, as a nice place, their existing sidewalk, but also the, the berm, if it comes back into the parking lot, they're worried about being any granite down there that they're gonna have to dig up to, to redo it. But the most compelling thing to me was they said that the connection to their people goes out and underneath the, the sidewalk and out underneath the road. And if something happens to there during construction and they lose it and they're down for a day, there's, there's a considerable amount of, of revenue that they lose because their connection is, what they said, the connection is.
What connection?
To, to the outside world, to their, to their customers.
To their internet connection or their electrical connections?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you were talking about to their people and I thought you meant physically the people in their building and I was getting lost.
Very good, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, we appreciate it. All right, what we're gonna do, I was wondering why Ted Curtis was here this evening, but it was to make this presentation that we're gonna move up. So, what I'd like to do is head down to new business, Paul, did you say just item number two first?
One, one and two.
One and two, yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree. We're gonna skip to item number one under new business is the council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of a hundred forty-two dollars for the campers at Natta Cook Day Camp and to the Merrimack Police K-9 Dallas pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B in Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen. You're not making this? No. Oh, okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's pretty quick. It's a donation from the Natta Cook Day Camp. Officer Wallen did a demo during the July camp and it really was a big hit with the kids and the parents. And they wanted to do something for the program and that's where the donation came from. So, it's from anything for, you know, maybe training expenses to supplies, to food, to whatever. So, it's really it.
Thank you. Any questions or thoughts from the council, see you none, move approval? Motion by Council Boyd, seconded by Tom Thornton. Oh, you did?
You missed, you missed his motion originally.
All right, well.
But I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna call the, call the chair into questions, so.
Pete, you get the next one.
I'm gonna let him arm wrestle for it. All right, would you like to discuss Peter's motion?
No, thank you.
See you none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero. And item number two under new business, the council will consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of two-hundred fifty dollars from Ted, Theodore Curtis and friends of the Merrimack Police Department Special Investigation Unit. I have five-twenty here. Did I say two-fifty? I'm sorry, I don't know why I said two-fifty. It must be a dyslexia thing or something. Pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B in Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen, sorry about that.
Um, yeah, if the council would mind, Ted, you wanna come up and, you can join me here? So, I'm sure you, you all heard the chief earlier, Mr. Coney, when they had the.
Watch the TV. Ted Curtis, Savannah Way, Merrimack.
So, they had Detective Parks thirty-year out of recognition. And so, Ted was Scots, FTO. Ted was a member of the police department, was a detective, police officer, I think from eighty-three to what, two thousand and four? So, and Ted's been living in town since and he's always been a huge supporter of the police department. We still stay in contact with each other. And his focus has always been helping the PD and community safety. And that's really where this donation came from. So, Ted spearheaded it, he's got a couple buddies, I don't know if you wanna maybe speak to that or?
Certainly, thank you Lieutenant, can you hear me okay? Basically, I was celebrating my sixty-third birthday in July and the boys wanted to get me a gift. And I said, let's make a donation to the PD. And the donation was specifically for the undercover drug unit. Since Councilman Albert can attest to, and myself, we worked at back in the eighties in the wild west of Merrimack in the old days. And they, they need help and I just wish that more people could donate. And hopefully, business is good next year or I'll be able to help out again. And that's where it all came from. So, I had two guys that I have lunch with once a week and I basically asked them and they said, sure. So, the donations are between those two and myself, total of five-twenty.
Thanks Ted, very nice.
So, this would be used for supplies, surveillance, what, whatever the guys in the unit need, so, and they're doing a great job.
Exactly, the idea in the undercover work is always that they need money when they need it and they don't need to go running around, you know, red tape. This way, this is a fund that the undercover detectives can just go to, it's not a taxpayer, it's basically a gift from a couple of residents.
Thank you. Peter.
Ted, thanks for paying it forward. You know, you've always been helpful and a big supporter, as Lieutenant said. I would say, based on this, I'm so moved on this motion. I love that.
It was an efficient motion there and a motion by Peter Albert, seconded by Nancy. Would you like to further discuss your motion? See you none, I. Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero. Thanks Ted, it's great to see you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
I'm surprised.
Thank you, good evening.
Take care now.
The next one?
Yeah, that's. All right, I don't know what I did with that page, man. All right. The council discussed the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of five hundred dollars to the Parks and Rec Department to be used towards the annual Halloween party and sponsor the Merrimack show, magic show that will be held during the event pursuant to RSA thirty-one ninety-five. That will be held during the event pursuant to RSA 3195B in Charter Article 8, Section 15.
So moved.
With the thanks that we-
A letter of thanks?
It would be appropriate.
Yes.
Thank you. Paul?
I just want to mention that it was from Santander Bank. They stepped up to the point to help out with the Halloween party that's happening at the end of this month, so.
Very nice. This, this wasn't their first time, was it? They've done this a few? This is the first time? Well, very nice. We definitely appreciate it. It's a great event. Is there any further discussion? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0. I don't know what I- That last few, if I can, just note that. I'm just going to keep this here so I can look at it when I get there. We're going to move back up to item number four under old business. Council to discuss, I'm, I'm sorry, item number five. Council to consider officially requesting to acquire a conservation easement over a portion of state-owned parcel known as Tax Map 5C/659 for the purpose to have the town center trail from Watson Park to Wildcat Falls. Eileen, did you want to speak to that? Yes.
Thank you for looking at Paul. Basically, what this is, is that while we're looking at the whole expansion of, of the width of the, the turnpike, we wanted to make sure that we included this, gave them a little, another nudge that the Conservation Commission still has interest in this and don't forget about us. I was looking at them earlier today because they, it's taken place over like two or three years. But the original request was that we acquire the whole 56 acre parcel. And at the time, they said that they wanted to use the 56 acres as wetlands mitigation for the project. So, and that they would consider an easement going along the river. So, we changed our request, or we didn't change our request, but, so I guess I would, what I would say is that if it's wetlands mitigation money, or wetlands mitigation plan anyway, it means it's now conservation land, whether it's under your, the Conservation Commission's auspices or not. So that might be a question also, is that we might ask them if they could give us that as part of the wetlands mitigation. Because you can, you can do that. It's basically putting it into the land bank of, of wetlands. So, so anyway, just spoke to Tim Tenhae, Becky did, and he said it's not urgent that we get this in here right now, but we thought it might be an opportune time to just give them another nudge. Yeah. So, can I write a letter?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
I guess that was a consensus, that was a beautiful, okay. All right, council, item number six under old business, council receiving update on the Watson Park project. And Kyle is here to speak to us about that.
I'm going to take this one, Mr. Chairman.
You are?
Yes.
Okay.
Kyle was, uh- Kyle's going to bring up the map. He, he was act, he was actually not at the, the meeting because of a family event.
Perfect.
So, last Thursday night, at the request of the council, we met with the abutters to Watson Park to discuss the Watson Park project. The three abutters showed up, total of four people showed up at the meeting. We discussed the parking lot expansion, the volleyball, the volleyball ice skating rink location, potential expansion for lighting the ice skating rink. And there were some comments, they were all in favor of the project. One resident brought up the fact that with the extra use going on down at the park, now that we're bringing the ice skating rink and maybe volleyball, possibly adding another porta potty down there. We said that would be something that we'd look at as, as a council and as a town to see if it is needed. They were all in favor of the parking lot. Actually, one of the abutters, the closest abutter to the parking lot was in favor of it. She, she made, mentioned again to us that cars are going down and parking out back at night. So she says with the parking, with the fencing around the parking lot and the gate, that should alleviate that problem and she was happy with that. Another neighbor discussed the lighting and I told them that the lighting is not in the budget for this year. However, that if we do do lighting, it will not be that ball field lighting like at Bice Field, but something decorative. Sort of like what you'll see if you go walk, if you go through, if they throw off enough light and that's the big deal. But something decorative that, that will light the area. Then their concern was what time? We said right now, the lights end at 10 o'clock at the old ice skating rink. However, I believe that the council would be, at the beginning at 10 o'clock, but if there is a problem, then I'm sure the council will look at reducing when the ice skating rink would be open in the wintertime. One of their other comments was something that was not related to the project, but they were wondering how the council felt about access to the water, river and the waterfront, that people are using it. At this time, I don't think we ever talked about that, as, the council has not talked about that, not we, but the council has not talked about that at this time. And I, I told them that that would be something the council would have to take up and look into and, and discuss. And they were more concerned with the, the access of people using it. They did bring up the fact that there are a lot of out-of-towners using our park and can we limit it to Merrimack residents only? And we cannot, because it had some federal funding on there and that's, long of the short of it is that's why that one porta potty is there because of some federal, some, some federal funding that we got, I believe it was an L chip grant or a L grant. So, yeah. So-
I know.
I think it was a $20,000, it was a $40,000 grant, 20, 20,000 match. So we had to pay 20 and they had to, they gave us 20. So-
What did we do with that, do you know?
Uh, we put the porta potty in.
No. You didn't, you didn't pay $20,000 to put it in a porta potty?
No, but we did some other improvements too and I, I can't remember all the, all the in-kind stuff.
Yeah, what, what it was is that the, the project had all kinds of in-kind work that was done. And so when the, as you might recall, a certain amount of money was left after that all took place because our match was in-kind services. So there was money left and I believe we used it for a contribution to the, to the pavilion? To the, what's the other thing?
So the pavilion and then the pergola.
No, the pavilion. The pavilion, I think we put-
I didn't, I didn't remember any grant, though that, that whole project started before I was on the council. But I didn't know of any grant that was accepted.
There was one and there was money left over and, and it was, it went into the, into the pavilion.
So that's why we cannot limit it to Merrimack residents only.
Sure.
Once again, they were in favor of it, of the project, so we're coming before you tonight to say, can we move forward with the, at least the ice skating rink portion of the project in the back kind of left-hand corner there? There were some other concerns, but like I said, there was more of trails and people trying to get from Twin Bridge Park to Watson Park. And we don't own the property in between the two parks. So, we talked about putting some end-to-trail, you know, private property kind of deal, signs up and discussing that with them and they seemed to be okay with that. But for the project itself, there was no concerns. They, they're actually like the project. They like that we're taking care of it and it's kind of greening up. But we're here tonight to see if we can move ahead with that plan of the volleyball slash ice skating rink in the back left-hand corner. We're hoping to get the water line in this year. I do not believe that might be possible because of time constraints to get it in before frost. And, and, and the contractor who we were going to use for that project has been very busy, so we'd have to line up another contractor to do that. So it might be early spring that we get the water in. We're going to try our hardest to get the water in, but I did want to bring that to the council attention. And we, we have, uh-
That's what they used to do.
You're being a wise guy.
Yeah. We, we do have a fire hydrant up top. If we got to run hose, we can run hose. However, I believe that DPW also has a water tank, that if they need to, they could bring down the water tank. And the fire department is across the street if we really need them to do something.
Will the parking lot be done?
Uh, the parking lot will definitely be done. Actually, I believe the, the posts are going in either this, well, early next week, if not tomorrow.
Just a real quick question before we have a motion. Do those signs, do we get those signs up that we talked about a few months ago?
We haven't yet, I think. Didn't that morph into whether police needed to be involved with that or?
Okay, I could talk later on about it.
I thought that took a, took a turn, whether we could do that or not.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, we, we can, we'll pick it up later. I just, when he mentioned a sign at the end of the trail, maybe pick it up, sorry about that.
Yeah, squirrel.
Squirrel. Barbara, just go ahead. We all know Becky.
So this was actually started before I came on board, so the new kid on the block thing. How is this being funded?
Uh, we already had, we already had the money set aside last year during the end of the year process with the Department of Public Works. After we came to the council, we got some pricing and we set the money aside. So the money's already set aside for this project.
Great, thank you.
Anything further? Yes. It's a pleasure.
Well, do you need a motion to? You have to move forward? Would you like to make that motion?
We move forward with the effort at Watson Park to move the ice rink.
A move we, move forward to relocate the ice rink to Watson Park in the section identified with the intent or hope of putting in volleyball courts as well.
And the fencing, do you want to include the? The fencing, that's all done.
The fencing's already been done, you already approved the fencing.
And that behalf of the second-
Do we need to include water or?
No, that's all part of the project.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Nancy. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I will, will be opposing the motion. As people know, that I do not like the location of it. I do appreciate the staff for going through the efforts of trying to get buy-in with the neighbors. I was a part of that meeting and I'm satisfied that I think the neighbors know what's going on. And while I do conceptually support a lot of the good things that are going on at Watson Park, I cannot in good faith support the location as presented, so I'll be voting no.
Very good, thank you Bill. Anything further? None? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained, 6-1-0 with Counselor Boyd, voted in the negative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and then? Did we cover everything now? Item number, number four, under new business, the council to review the letter requesting Health Trust combine claims information for the town of Merrimack and the Merrimack School District for the purpose of looking into whether combining entities would be beneficial to our overall rating for health insurance. Thank you. And Eileen?
Yes. That was one of the items that was brought up by one of the school board members during your, your council, school board meeting, joint meeting. And the idea whether or not we could combine our health insurance, you know, buying power by combining the two entities. And the answer is yes, we can. We both have our insurance through Health Trust, former NHMA Health Trust. And, and it would not be a big deal at all. They could keep their plans, which are different than ours, and we could keep our plans. And it, it would all be separate. The advantage to it is that currently, we are not fully credible because we don't have, which is, as Barbara knows, an insurance term, which means that we're not completely rated on our own because we don't have enough employees. And I think you have to have 1,000 employees or 1,000 covered lives in order for you to be considered credible and not have the big ups and downs. And then you just buy reinsurance for catastrophics. So at this point, we now have, I'm, I'm not sure what part of our insurance is, is based on our own. It's getting closer to, I, I want to say we're maybe 70%. And then the rest of it's, we're pooled in with another, with all the other above 100 employee towns that aren't, that are insured through them. So, to make a long story short, yes, we can. We can combine it. All it takes is a simple letter. So basically, you, the council, authorized me to send a letter that we're willing to allow the Health Trust to combine our data with the school district and, and come up with rates that are not, you know, that, that we don't have to take. It's just an, you know, here's an estimate, here's what would happen. And at the same, so at the same time, I, so we would, we would send in a letter and the school board would send in a similar letter and then they would come up with our rates for us.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Peter?
Eileen, I'm glad to hear that and thank you for doing the research. I thought that was kind of an interesting succession, suggestion by, by Board Member Schneider. And I like the idea. I'm just curious, the, the plan that the school has, is it, is it, if, if we were to go with what they have, would we save money?
It would cost you a fortune to go with what they have, yes. And, and to be fair, our, our health insurance, which as you know, we have worked very hard to get this $1,000, $3,000 deductible plan for years, is a much lesser plan, less rich plan than the school district has. But their rates are significantly lower than ours because of their, because of their experience, the age of their employees in relation to ours, the categories that we have, police officers, firefighters, DPW workers and, and the like. So, it's, school districts are always, I can't say always, but I've never seen it when a school district wasn't, didn't have lower rates than a town would. So, we couldn't afford to have the plan that they have because our experience is not good.
And so by doing this route again, how much was the savings going to be?
We don't know. That's, that's what it is, is we would ask them to, with the HIPAA regulations and everything, we need to, as the, as the governing body, you'd need to authorize them to combine your information with the school's information to have a non-binding estimate of what our rates would be.
Thank you.
Mr. Barber?
Just something I thought about while we were sitting here and, and you may want to include this in your letter so that they can look at it from that perspective as well. The two plans are very different as far as deductibles and copays. So what they might want to do or consider is we have the account, town of Merrimack, and under the account, there are two separate groups. That way, no one has to go back to the union to renegotiate unless they're already in that process already. But we still get the benefit of the, of the better rate because of the number of covered lives.
No, I, I guess I didn't explain that correctly, but we could all keep our own plans.
Okay, yeah, that's probably what they're thinking about then.
So we, nothing would have to change. We wouldn't, it wouldn't involve any negotiations of any kind. We would still all have our same health insurance. It just would be different than, it would just be, get the camera going over there.
Yeah, really, maybe they did.
So, somebody was sneaking out. So, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's just a matter of, we wouldn't notice anything from one day to another, except for how the rates are.
Exactly. It's, it's just administrative business work that they have to do. Thanks.
Is there anything further?
I, I want to restate, and I apologize for that, but this is, this is merely sending a letter to the insurance carrier asking them to consider what it would do. It's not committing us, it's not committing the school district to any particular motion, but both of us need- but both of us need to send a letter or they can't do anything. So, all we're doing now is sending the letter saying, "Please look into it and tell us what might happen." Thank you.
All right. Should we have a motion?
I move approval to send a letter to the Health Trust asking them to look into the opportunities.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Kane, seconded by Barbara, yes. Eileen?
I just wanted, no, I just wanted to know if the chairman would, might like to call it school board chairman and ask them if they would like to send the same letter.
They will do that.
Because it's, there's no point in doing it unless we're both doing it.
Right.
I thought you were already in discussion with them about that.
Actually, I'd still like to know the, the information. Oh, you won't get it, okay.
Okay. Nancy's...
It's HIPAA, yeah.
Nancy had stepped out, so...
Do we get a second or...
Yes, we had a second. By Barbara. So, we'll, just to move on, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, abstain. Six zero zero. Right. Next item on the agenda, minutes, September thirteenth, minutes.
Those already have been approved. We already approved those last time. I'm not sure why they're in the packet this...
It was an error.
It looked really familiar, 'cause if you look at the next item minutes, it says, "We approve the minutes from this one."
Okay, very good.
So, that took care of that.
I'm glad you did that, Tom, thank you. September twenty-seventh, minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, be approved with the following modification. It's the only one I found. Page seventeen. Under comments for the council, line three, could I read that Counselor Boyd spoke of the, 'cause I raised that particular issue, under comments for the council.
Wait, Ted, what do we...
On the, on line three, it reads, "The Michaela Vermei 5K will be held." I'm asking that it include in front of the words, in front of the word "the," that it says Counselor Boyd spoke of the...
Yes.
And then on line sixteen, while I, I appreciate the gesture of me saying I spoke of a collection to the food bank, I do believe it's my colleague to my left, Counselor Albert, that made that particular comment.
There are similarities, I can see the mistake.
Well, we do have the same Barbara, so that's probably true.
You're, you're just jealous that we have a shine?
I am.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any further modifications? We have a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Boyd, seconded by Counselor Healy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Six zero zero. Comments from the press, seeing none. Comments from the public, seeing none. Comments from the council, seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Boyd to adjourn, seconded by Tom Thornton. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, forcefully seconded. All those opposed, abstain. Six zero zero, thank you very much.